Twenty-seventh, 2022, meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Please stand for a pledge of allegiance.
I proudly concede the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any public announcements, Alex Hagerty?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I have two quick public announcements. Residents of Abington, stay up to date with all the happenings and important information related to the town. Abington has launched our new communications platform, Code Red. The system will be the official voice of Town Hall and used to send community updates, upcoming events, and critical communications. Expect alerts regarding road closures, storms, closings, and emergency alerts. Please sign up to stay informed by phone calls to landlines and cellphones and text messages and emails. The link to sign up for Code Red is available on the Town of Abington's Facebook page, and it's also on my Alex Hagerty Selectmen page as well, and I know my other board members' Facebook pages as well, too. There is English, Portuguese, and telecommunication device for the deaf capabilities. Enrollment is easy. Create an account or enroll as a guest. Please do not create a login with Google, Facebook, or Twitter. When you go onto the link, it will say that you can sign up through Facebook or Twitter, so don't do that. Go through your email. All right, and the second public announcement that I have for today, today is also PTSD, Posttraumatic Stress Disorder Awareness Day. This Awareness Day is an awareness for an opportunity to draw attention to PTSD, raise awareness of treatment available for those affected, and provide support for individuals who are burdened by this heavy disorder. Posttraumatic stress disorder results from having experienced or witnessed a terrifying event. The most common traumas associated with PTSD are sexual and interpersonal violence. Being involved in a car accident, excuse me, the most common traumas associated with PTSD, being involved in a car accident, witnessing serious injury, or the death of another person, or being in combat. Those experiencing PTSD often struggle to control their emotions and may have unexpected outbursts, often straining supportive personal relationships and causing them to feel alone or uncared for. Many individuals suffering from PTSD also struggle with depression and substance abuse. Help is available. Seek out help. People's mental health matters. If you are a veteran experiencing the symptoms of PTSD, please call the VA Crisis Line at If you are someone or someone you know you love is struggling with PTSD or mental health, please call the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Admin Hotline at 1-800-662-4357, or the National Suicide Prevention Hotline at 1-800-273-8255. That's all I have for public announcements, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hagerty. Kevin?
Yes, I just have one. Tenth District Brewing Company in Abington Celebrates have partnered to come up with a perfect beer to celebrate Abington's 310th birthday. Brewed with Irish malt, this lager will be available in a limited edition, specially-designed can, inspired by Abington's rich history. Please join the Abington Celebrates Committee at Tenth District Brewing Company Tap Room at 748 Brockton Ave. on June 30, 2022. The doors open at 4:00 p.m. with the unveiling of the Abington 310 Celebration Lager planned for 6:00 p.m. Abington Celebrates events would not be possible without the support, cooperation, and hard work of Abington's police and fire departments, Department of Public Work Staff, Board of Selectmen, and its many volunteers and community partners. Please join us as we raise a glass and salute some of the important groups that make Abington great. We want to honor all that they do by allowing them to honor the first pour in unveiling of this historic collaboration. There will also be a birthday cake provided by Cake Connections, and the Cheesy Chicks food truck will be on site.
That's all. Thank you, Kevin. Tim?
I have nothing.
Mike?
Nothing today.
And I have nothing. So the first item on the agenda, we're going to take the agenda a little bit out of sequence, and we're going to go right to the badge pinning ceremony.
Thank you. Deputy Glenn's getting the members of the Abington Fire Department in. We're here for a badge pinning and a swearing-in ceremony for our newest firefighter/paramedic who just joined the department last month. Just give them a moment to get in. While they're coming in, this is the 21st firefighter I have been able to hire as your fire chief since I took over to have a badge pinning ceremony at your events, as well as the entire command staff that I was able to work through the promotion process. So thank you for allowing us the time to do this each time. I know you have a busy agenda tonight. I'm going to keep this brief. I don't have a golden retriever puppy, so that's going to kind of speed things up somewhat. That is a tough act to follow, I'll tell you that.
Do you want one?
The police is doing a great job. Do we want one? We'd love to have a puppy. We don't really have room for it at the moment.
I thought I was off when I was just here.
Is everybody, Andrew, are you here? Andrew, will you come on up? So I'd like to introduce to the town of Abington, this is firefighter/paramedic Andrew Macedo. That is correct, right? Okay. Macedo. Andrew comes to us from the city of New Bedford, where he was working with the New Bedford EMS Department. He was hired back in May, and he's been on shift since then doing training, and he actually begins his first official shift without the safety net of having extra people onboard this Saturday. That notice is coming out this week, Cap. I'll let you know. Very impressed with his paramedic skills. I'm hearing that across the board with his patient assessment skills. He's not shy. He's getting right in there. He's a quick learner on everything he's been doing. Very impressed with everything that we've had with him so far. And I believe your girlfriend Teresa, she's going to do the badge pinning. Teresa, if you want to come up?
Hi.
How do you do? Nice to meet you. But try not to hurt him.
Should I get a picture? Sorry, I'm a fox.
Oh, I'm a fox. Nice to meet you. I'm a fox. (APPLAUSE). Take my phone up? Well, you know, Adams, our town clerk, she's going to swear. Andrew in?
(INAUDIBLE) swear.
You saw him swear.
You saw him swear. That I was supporting the plan.
That I was supporting the plan.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution and general law.
Constitution and general law.
And the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
The Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
The Charter and Bylaws.
Charter and Bylaws.
Of the Town of Abington.
Town of Abington.
And I will faithfully.
I will faithfully.
And to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office to which.
Of the office to which.
Have been appointed.
I have been appointed. (APPLAUSE). Mr. Chairman, I don't want to, I'm not sure what the next item is, but if we hang for, if you want to hear the report from Holbrook Dispatch, that may be a perfect segue into that.
Well, that's our second item I'm going to bring up. I'm going to bring up, if you're all through.
Absolutely, thank you.
And I'll bring up Steve Hook from the Holbrook Regional Emergency Call Center.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, board members. I hope you are well. Director Steve Hook from the Holbrook Regional Communications Center. I have Deputy Lauren Milky with me tonight. So, as you know, we have the responsibility of dispatching Abington Fire, Abington Police, and answering your 911 calls here in town. We have been dispatching Abington Fire since 2012. Recently, six months ago or so, we assumed dispatch responsibilities for the police department and your 911 P-SAP. So things are going well. Last year, we received just under $1 million to assume the dispatch responsibilities for Abington Police, and I'm happy to report this year, as part of the FY '23 State 911 Department Development Grant, the Town of Abington, through our agency, will receive $898,351.72 for equipment and capital items for dispatch services. So just some of the items that were requested, and these requests came from the two chiefs, the police chief and the fire chief, and we submitted on their behalf. So some of the equipment is the MDTs for the cruisers, so we're purchasing all new MDTs for the police cruisers. We're upgrading fiber optics from Holbrook to Abington and inside the town here itself, some fiber optic cable. We are installing new microwave equipment to all the radio sites. That will be the backup to the fiber. We are also doing some, putting in some redundant equipment as well. I don't want to get too in detail because it's kind of boring, but we're also installing for the fire departments, both fire stations, we are installing PA system and upgrading their station alerting once again. So in addition to that, in addition to that, we are purchasing and installing a generator for this facility, a Town Hall here, as part of this project as well, because there's some critical infrastructure here as well. So that's all. I'm happy to answer any questions, but we did receive that funding, and I just wanted to report on behalf of the Holbrook Regional Communications Center.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
What was that total again? Just?
$898,351.72.
So going forward, will we be receiving more money for other upgrades?
Yeah, so it's a competitive grant, but we have the opportunity, being a regional center, to apply for additional equipment, and we will apply every year based on the town's needs and whatever we assess that we continue forward.
Right.
Upgrading radio equipment, you know, there's a lot of different items that we can procure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other, any questions from the audience or the fire department?
I'd like to point out, though, that these are a lot of items that otherwise would have been on our capital plan, and we realized back in January storm how critical it was to have power at this building.
Right.
When it went on around town, and this is going to, you know, really help us, you know, we'll be able to use as a warming center if needed, a charging station if needed, whatever, but more than that, we'll also be able to stay in communications.
Right.
With other departments in the town. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for support.
Thank you.
And in closing, and I know the question is why he was 911 buying a generator for this building, to piggyback on what the town manager just said, during a lot of the storms, this is really the hub for the town communication system, whether it's the fiber network, whether it's the telephone system, and our emails, and we had lost those previously when there was a power outage to this building. For us to lose our emails, that's a big deal, because it's not just communicating back and forth, those are also notifications. Since then, our IT Director Wayne Neweling has found a way to kind of make a bridge to protect that, but this is really going to solve the critical infrastructure. When we went to the, for the emergency generators a couple years ago at both fire stations, this doesn't want to hang, we also priced to get one for here, and at the time, we just, the town couldn't afford it. So this really closes that gap, so he's really helped to build in the infrastructure that we have here, so. No further ado, I want to thank you again for your time, and I'll let you get back to your meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay. Vinnie, in 6:45, we have a meeting with Vinnie DeAndre regarding activity at, yeah, 43, it says 3:43, Highland Road, and also, I think before we meet with Vinnie, let's go to item number one, and that is to vote on the commercial garage license that we held off at the last meeting because of some concerns that the police and fire had, but it turns out that it was not with this particular tenant. So I'd entertain a motion to renew their license.
I'll make a motion to approve the license for Champion Garage.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Okay, Vinnie, the reason, if you want to come up, the reason we had asked for a list of your tenants and what was going on there, as you know, you had a tenant, I understand that that tenant's gone now, that was causing some issues, and apparently, most of the police or fire calls that were going on was because of that tenant. Is that correct?
That's correct, but also other phone calls were made to other people. You and I had a conversation at Lowe's.
Mm-hmm.
You said you'd be there to help out. Scott, the KBR office with a booklet showing all these laws that were broken, selling alcohol, selling drugs, prostitution, all these things went on since they moved in there in July. They're supposed to be a podcast company. The town never made them come in and get any licenses.
There was no license required by this board for that.
It's entertainment.
Not if they're just doing a podcast, then it isn't.
Okay, well, then what about the after-hours?
Well, the after-hours, that's where the police department comes in.
Well, no, they were running a business after-hours with gambling prostitutes.
Vinnie, it's not up to us to evict your tenant.
I'm not asking to evict him. They were breaking every law in the bylaws.
And that's what the police handles that, not the Board of Selectmen.
They didn't handle it. Is the chief here today?
No, he's not.
No.
And this chief was not here during that time.
Okay, well, nobody did anything? Kevin?
Pointers?
Have my notebook that you supposedly had sat down with the chief with?
Yes, I sat down, yep.
Yep, that was back in December?
Yep.
Our conversation with you, Alex, was in September.
Mm-hmm.
I believe yours was shortly after that, and then Kevin, that was December. Do you have that book?
What's that?
Do you have that book?
Not on me, no.
Do you know when you can get it or have it back to me?
I gave it to you. You never gave it to me that night. You made copies, actually.
Okay.
If you recall.
You got the copies of that?
Again, not on me.
Right, but you do have them, you can get them to me anyway?
Yep.
Back, yeah, okay, all right. Listen, I reached out to every board member, everybody here.
Okay, so the point is that tenant is gone?
Yes, they are.
Okay, so we had asked, who do you have in there for tenants now, and what are they doing?
Well, my lawyer says it's not important who else is there. I'm not going to answer the question.
Okay.
Otherwise, who's there?
Then I guess this conversation's over, then.
You're right.
All right?
Okay.
Chief, would you like to say anything?
Thank you. Just for clarification, because we were aware that there was a problem tenant. A lot of this was a police matter. However, there were some fire department issues as well, possibly either tampering or altering fire department alarm notification systems, i.e. the smoke detectors alarms. So we were aware of that. We found out about it after they had been repaired, and I explained to Mr. DeAndre that that really had to be done, you know, let us know when it's actually like that, not after it's repaired, because at that point, it's a moot point. We need to see it. He was also trying to get us to go in to inspect just that problem tenant. However, the way I had left it as the chief of the department, I says, I'm not going to cherry pick one place. If we're going to go and inspect a building, we're casting wide net. I'm inspecting the entire building, all units in that building, and we'll see what we'll find. We're not looking for things, but I'm also not going to single one potential person out because we're not going to try to evict a tenant for him. We were never able to see, we never able, were to get a commitment from him to be able to go in to do that. That's kind of where it stood, and I believe at that point, the tenant had left anyway. So our inspection's up there with the licensed garages, the commercial garages, and I think there's only one that are up there. We have no issues with it, so, thank you.
Do you have no concerns over the building?
I do not.
The safety of it now?
Correct.
Did you ever get into the building to date, to do any inspections, since that?
My fire prevention department did. My deputy captain did.
Since that?
I'm familiar with the building, but I haven't been since then. Since then, we haven't, for a while. But we also have had no other complaints and/or had a reason to go up there for an emergency that I'm aware of.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else from the board?
Asking for clarification, when was the Board of Selectmen notified with this?
Well, Alex was notified probably the first one. He's the one, first one I ran into, and he said that he would make sure that the town would help out with trying to evict these people because of all the laws they were breaking. Okay? The police were letting them, the police set down a big-
I think my words were, I would look into it. I didn't, I never said we'd issue an evicting.
But the police-
But we would look into if there were anything, if there was anything illegal going on, that we would look into it.
The police were in the building on the end of August, when they had over 500 people up there, okay, and a big, huge party. They had to call Waymouth Police, Brockton Police, Whitman Police, Sheriff's Department. I don't know why the state police weren't available, but they weren't, okay? I get a phone call at 2:00 in the morning asking me to come up to the building to be able to access a unit, and, which I did, I got there about 2:30. I guess the bulk of the people were gone. It was about 75 people that ran into the unit, locked the door. There were six officers left. They said, they asked me if I had keys. I says, yes. I says, okay. They says, well, can we go in? I says, yep, let's go. So we went to the door, because I asked them if one of them could get in front of me with a vest, okay, but he didn't. He says, well, no, we have to go in behind you. I says, okay. So we went in the building, knocked on the door, opened the door. It's after-hours. The town bylaws, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., unless you have extended hours through the town at a hearing. I told these people a million times, so that was in August. This whole party regime went on until September, February, okay? That's when they found guns in there, they found all kinds of stuff, paraphernalia, and, you know, the stripper pole and all the other odds and ends that were in there. You know, just, and they finally broke in. The police chief should have all records of all this stuff anyway, so he's inquiring why that address came up so often. It was because of those things. He didn't read his police reports. I had the drug dog go through the building. I had the, the police were there probably three or four times. From the break-in, they broke back in and stole stuff out of there, but nobody did nothing, so.
How many rental units do you have in there?
There's 12.
How often do you inspect all of them?
Well, I inspect them all, well.
As a tenant, as a landlord?
Every, well, I have the right to go in there anytime I want.
Right.
Okay, but if there's any illegal activity.
Yep.
Okay, I don't want it.
Oh, we did ask.
I don't want, I don't want to see anybody get hurt on my building. I don't want to see anybody get killed.
Right, right.
Okay? When these officers went up there that night, I don't know how many there were, all those people that were there, was pushing the police officers back and roughing them up.
Were there any arrests made that night?
Not to my knowledge.
Was anyone PC'd, put into protective custody?
No, again, I got there-
Were any charges, was there any summons, anything? Anyone summoned to court that night?
No, nobody, no.
No, okay.
So what happened?
That was one night, but you said, you said they've had guns, paraphernalia.
Right.
A drug dog went through.
That's we found out.
Police there three to four times.
The guns and all the stuff, we found.
So how many times have the police been there? Is it three to four times only, or how many times?
No. I want to say maybe eight or nine times.
In those eight or nine times, has anyone been arrested those eight or nine times?
Nope.
Has anyone ever been taken into protective custody?
No, but if you read the police report of the-
Has anyone ever been summoned to court?
No.
Those, okay, so do you feel that the Abington Police Department is not doing their job?
No, they're not.
Okay, so I'm not, I'm trying to get, where are you going with this?
Well, where I'm going with it is because in August, when they went in there, they were smoking, they saw the signs that booze is for sale, they saw everything that was there.
Did they make any reference to the ABC? Was there anything, was there any referrals put up?
The ABC?
Yeah.
Yeah, I called them. They said they couldn't do anything.
But I'm saying, did the Abington Police Department make any referrals?
No.
No?
Nothing.
And when you called them, did they come out?
I didn't call them. They were already there when I got there that evening.
So they were there, so did they-
They were there, and I don't know how long they were there for.
Did they make any sort of arrests? Did they make any charges?
No, they made all the reports with all the information about the alcohol being sold, marijuana, and the party going on.
So you're saying they listed that in a report, but nothing else was done with it?
Yes, they did.
They didn't make any summons, anything like that? I'm not asking about that, I'm asking you directly.
Yeah, no, they did, they did nothing.
So the ABC was there when you got there? They did not summon anyone?
No.
No charges made? No one was arrested? But you're telling me that they wrote a report that they found all this stuff, all this illegal activity, and they did nothing about it?
Correct.
Do you feel that you have, that the ABC did not do their job that night?
The ABC said they can't do anything because they don't have a liquor license.
So the ABC admitted that there's no liquor license, and then they admitted that they found liquor in the building?
No, the police department saw the liquor.
Okay, it's just very confusing, so.
Well, hang on, let me explain it for you a little better.
But hold on, the guns that were, the guns that you said were found there, were those confiscated?
Yeah, they were, the police took them, and they found out that they were prop guns.
They were prop guns, okay, so.
Two of them, two of them had serial numbers.
So let's rephrase, but hold on, let's rephrase this. They're not guns, they were prop guns?
They turned out to be prop guns.
Okay, so you said guns. Let's talk, let's say they're a prop gun.
Yep.
That's not a gun. It's not a firearm. That's important.
Well, it's a firearm, it looks like it's a gun.
What did they find for paraphernalia in that building?
They had, they were, what they call the blocks.
What did they find for paraphernalia in that building?
Well, there was marijuana, there was grass all around, you know, I don't know, marijuana.
So my last question is.
Yep.
What do you do to screen a tenant? I own a multifamily, so I do a very thorough screening.
Residential's different.
I've never had an issue, but that's fine, residential, commercial, don't ask me, what do you do to screen your tenants before you move, you would move someone forward into that building?
I don't, I'm not afforded to be able to do background checks like you can, okay? You can run background checks.
That's fine, what do you do? I'm asking what you do.
Well, I typically find out how long they've been in business. I get all their paperwork, I get the copy of their license, their business certificate, their insurance they need. The guy that came in there was Michael Norton, he was there as for the podcaster. Then his buddy came in as a, I don't know, call it a sportsman's.
Were they both on the lease?
No. One signed as guarantor, but he's not on the lease itself. This other guy, his name is Jeffrey Light, okay? And then what he was doing was doing these sporting clothes events with all these little girls that were coming in and trying the clothes on. And if they're in the cable studio, it's two floors. Upstairs, he's got video cameras on the little girls changing clothes, okay?
Did you call the police on this?
Well, I told them.
Do you have evidence of this?
I told them. I told the police.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. This is important.
Go ahead.
Do you have evidence of that?
I have evidence of the cameras in there, yes.
I know that you said there's cameras, but you just said that they were videotaping But that's fine, residential, commercial, don't ask me, what do you do to screen your tenants before you move, you would move someone forward into that building?
I don't, I'm not afforded to be able to do background checks like you can, okay? You can run background checks.
That's fine. What do you do? I'm asking what you do.
Well, I typically find out what, how long they've been in business. I get all their paperwork. I get the copy of their license, their business certificate, their insurance they need. The guy that came in there was, was Michael Norton. He was there as a, as for the podcaster. Then his buddy came in as a, I don't know, call it a sportsman's.
Were they both on the lease?
No. One, one signed as, as guarantor, but he's not on the lease itself. This other guy, his name is Jeffrey Light, okay? And then what he was doing was doing these sporting good, sporting clothes events with all these little girls that were coming in and trying the clothes on. And if they're in the cable studio, it's two floors. Upstairs, he's got video cameras on the little girls changing clothes, okay?
Did you call the police on this?
Well, I told them.
Do you have evidence of this?
I told them. I told the police.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. This is important.
Go ahead.
Do you have evidence of that?
I have evidence of the cameras in there, yes.
I know that you said there's cameras there, but you just said that they were videotaping little girls changing.
Right.
Do you have that evidence? That is a-
I don't have the evidence. They have the videotape. They have, they have the tape. They told me what they're doing. The owner, Jeffrey Light and Michael Norton.
Okay, but there's only one person on the lease, so what did you do as far as your lease with the one person when you found out there was a second person in there doing a business that was not on the lease?
I told them, they can't, they can't sublease. It's in the lease.
And what happened after that?
Nothing. Arguments ensued every day, okay? They were, they were causing all kinds of problems for the other tenants, parking cars in front of, in their, in their bays, in their, in front of their units. It was an absolute nightmare.
So what process did you initiate as a landlord?
Well, let's see, I called, besides the local officials, including the fire department.
I'm not talking about local officials. I'm talking about you as a landlord.
State police.
You was a landlord in that lease.
Yeah, go ahead.
Did you, what, what process do you take? Not, not calling a local official. You have a lease with a person.
Right.
Did you handle that as a landlord?
They're in default. They were handed default notices all the time.
Okay, and so where is that right now?
Well, they're out now. I finally evicted them in February.
So you, you sent the default notices, and did you pursue that in court?
It is in court.
Okay, it's currently in court?
Currently in court.
All right, Vinnie, you said you have 12 rental units there, and you're not going to tell us who's in there.
No.
Which is fine, but you also just said before you rent to anyone, you get a business certificate.
Yes, I have business.
So there's only two people listed here at that address with business certificates?
State, state, state businesses.
State businesses?
They're logged with the state. If they're logged with the state, they don't have to log with the town.
So everyone there is either a corporation or has a business certificate from the town of Abington?
Yes.
And you have proof of all that?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Anything else, guys? All right, thank you, Vinnie.
Back to my question, when did this occur? Because I was not notified.
Started, started in July. Well, they, they came in in July, the first, the end of July. They, that's when they disarmed the, the fire alarm system for 26 days, okay? That's when I brought my log report, my alarm report to the chief and said, "Listen, you know, this is 26 charges. These guys have dismantled the fire alarm, which affects all these other people, all these other tenants." And then from there, it went to this big melee the end of August. When I say melee, I mean, I just heard that all these police departments were there, and they told me there was four or 500 people there. But they were fighting with the police, pushing them, shoving them, calling them names, you know. I don't want to see anybody get hurt. Nor do I want anybody that's up there drinking and doing drugs, get behind the wheel and leave, okay? And kill somebody in the town here, a child, an adult, or anything else, okay? I lost my son 14 years ago, and it's no joy, okay? And I did everything I could to make sure that everybody was safe, but nobody was listening. I did call the state police, Dr. Trooper Morrissey. I did talk to Tim Cruz, who called you, and we had our conversations. And time has just gone on, and I just couldn't take it, and I just ended up just evicting them and threw them out, and fights broke out, and I just, whatever. I was just disappointed. I didn't have to go that long and take up that kind of time. The police know that there was unlicensed drivers driving up there? I gave them that information.
They know that?
Yes, they do. Kid Michael Norton, at least, he gave me, I thought was a license. Showed up to be a mass ID. He doesn't have a license, yet he was driving. So I spoke, took, spoke to the officer, came to the scene. When he showed up, I showed him his paperwork saying it was just a mass ID, and, but he's driving a car on the property. Now, I don't want people to drive on the property if they don't have a license, period. I don't want the liability to follow me for any reason whatsoever, so. And there was an accident on property there that somebody drove over one of the rocks there, left half their car behind. I was surprised they drove away, but they did. So they had to have been screwed up, you know, either high or drunk. I don't know. I'm not a cop, so I don't know. I'm not confused either. I did what I could when I could.
I'm kind of lost for words.
So my-
This is a pretty big situation. Sitting here as a selectman, why the hell did, this is only the first time we're talking about this, and it happened in July.
I spoke to Alex in September. I spoke to Kevin in, in December. He said he was having a meeting with the police chief in December, and he'd get back to me.
And these are some very serious allegations and-
Yes, they are.
Why is this the, and more importantly, sitting up here as a selectman, why the, why the hell did I not know that this was going on? Why was I not shared with this information?
I don't think there was an official complaint lodged with the Board of Selectmen.
Not only that, but that podcast did not license VRUs. The police, I mean, yeah, we're not, we, the police don't tell us everything they do, trust me.
Yeah, well, I mean, we're not, we're not the police. No, we need them to report to us each time.
I'm not talking about the, the police. Our direct communication is with Scott. Scott, if this was a big situation going on here, why am, why am I sitting here being the last to know?
I don't know. Were you on the board then?
In July? Yeah, I was when this all happened, because, yeah, I'm not really sure why you don't know.
It was discussed with some of the gentlemen here. It was discussed. It was a police matter. At that time, I want to say we were probably between chiefs when it first happened.
The building inspector knew.
And he's no longer here? Well, the good news is the tenant is gone, and hopefully there's no more issues up there.
Shouldn't be.
Why did you not let the fire chief in at the time?
He was trying to make it a different issue. He came up and did one inspection, but, excuse me, let me just tell you what it was, okay? He came in there, this guy had all this, I want to call it cotton, hanging from the ceilings, like it was some-
Like a display or something?
Mood thing, you know, like a, no, like a, you know, mood thing, you know? And, and stuff, so he said, "No, all that stuff's got to come down." In the meantime, I'm saying to myself, "Listen, you got to tell the guy he has no fire extinguishers in here. He's got no occupancy for, for how many people can be in there, okay?"
But you're in charge of your building.
Wait a minute. Not the fire department squads. They, they regulate the amount of people.
You're in charge of your building and making sure you have fire extinguishers? You are!
It's, it's up to the tenant to supply the tenants. Not all tenants require certain fire extinguishers.
I understand that. I understand that, but if you have a tenant that's doing something.
Yeah.
It's, it's on you to make sure you have the proper fire suppression.
I have the right fire suppression. I have manual as well.
Okay, then this shouldn't have been an issue.
I guess my question is, why, why did you not, especially with everything-
Put it on me, let me tell you.
Everything you're saying-
It's your building.
It doesn't, yes, that's right, but every tenant has to have their own-
Claiming ignorance doesn't make you innocent.
A commercial garage would have certain, certain extinguishers.
It's still, it's still your building.
So how do you know that all the tenants? How do you know all your tenants have the proper fire suppression?
I was going to say, do you, do you do, how often do you go into each one of your 12 tenants and do an inspection on it?
Maybe once a year.
Once a year, so I mean, so when you go in, I mean, are you checking for fire extinguishers?
I look for hazards.
Are you checking, like, any of these things? Do you know when the last time-
So you're not going to let the fire chief in there to inspect each unit?
He wants to inspect every unit.
And he should.
There's 11 other units here that are all law-abiding people.
How do you know that?
I know it.
You know they have the proper fire extinguisher?
So according to you, this former tenant wasn't.
Mr. Yannick?
This is a-
Mr. Yannick, so, so hold on, so what I'm saying is, you have, you have all these issues with this one person, and you're saying- So, so as much as you're telling me that, telling this board that the chief was picking one person, you are as well. But, but what I'm getting at is-
No, I'm picking the person that's the problem.
If you were, if you were so confident on the other 11 businesses and this one business that you feel is the bad one, and there's everything wrong, it would have only helped you to have a fire chief come in there and do an inspection of your property. It doesn't matter if it was one unit, all units.
But he doesn't have to do everybody. He has to just do the one that's having the violations.
Yes, that's what you, that's what you want.
Selling alcohol, they're selling drugs, God knows what else. The ATF wouldn't get involved unless I can prove they were selling guns.
He's a fire chief. He's not looking for drugs when he goes in there. What I'm saying is, you are a landlord.
Yep.
You are in charge of that entire building.
Correct.
It is on you. You have leases, you rent, you lease those units. The Board of Selectmen doesn't lease your units.
No, they don't.
You as a landlord, you as the owner of the building do it, not the Board of Selectmen. It is not our job to lease your building and to, and to police it for that. That is you, the landlord, and that is your lease between the landlord and the leasing. What I'm getting at is, you have all these issues that you bring up in this one unit. You should have let the fire chief in, regardless of one unit or 12 units, front to back. Let them get in and look at the building.
Well, you all take it-
If you felt there was nothing wrong with it and you do yearly inspections, great. But you would have had, you would have had, as you are making it out to be a laundry list of violations, that, that you could have had the Abington Fire Chief on your side, helping you go to court, or whatever it may be.
I came with him in August, okay, two months after he was in there, after they had the, the fire alarm system broken down for 26 days. I said, "That's 26 counts of tampering with fire, fire thing. Here's my alarm company's report."
Was it working the day that you met with him?
Yes, I got it working. That's what I did.
So, so it was, it was-
That's my job.
It was working on the day you met with him, and he asked you to go through the entire building, correct?
No, not that day, no. He says, "Oh, I can't help you." I says, "What do you mean you can't help me? Here's, here's 26 days in an alarm report from the alarm company, saying it's been, been out of service."
So how did we get from that to a full building inspection?
That came later. This, this, this went up to eight months, okay? Everybody here took, took a note to abide, to bylaws and stuff, certain timeframes. Nobody was listening to the timeframes. All the action going on up there was going on after 7:00 p.m., okay? So, when it was reported as that, you people should have stepped up and said, "Hey, this is all going on. They have no license to be there. They have no operating license. They should be not doing anything after 7:00 p.m."
But, correct me if I'm wrong, but you, you said tonight that the police called you down there at one point?
That was that one night.
Okay, after 7:00 p.m.?
It was 2:00 in the morning.
Okay, after 7:00 p.m. There was people in the building. They called you down. Why did they call you? You are the landlord.
Because they all ran into the, into the building. There were 75 people.
But you are the landlord, the owner of the building. That's what they did.
I have keys.
They didn't call the Board of Selectmen to go down to your, to your building. They called the landlord to go down. And then when you said to put a vest in front of you, they said, "No, you're the landlord. You are going in first."
Right.
Do you see how this is laying out? You are the landlord. You were the owner of that building.
I didn't have a vest on either, okay?
Yeah, but you are renting to this person. You're leasing to this person.
Okay? I'm not going to be heroic today. I'm not going to take a shot.
Chief, do you want to add something?
So, some of this is news to me too, because I thought a lot of these things had been cleaned up, and there were no issues there. The issues had been resolved. Obviously, hearing this, I want to get to the bottom of this, so under chapter 148 of the Mass General Laws, I am going to require a comprehensive inspection of the entire building, all of the units, in conjunction with the Board of Health, the Building Department, and the police to back us up if needed. We're going to find a mutual time that works for him, realistically, in a short time. We're going to go through the entire building and see if there's any issues, and we're going to end this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
So, there's nothing more to discuss on this until we get a report back from the fire chief?
No, I would just advise, Mr. Yannick, please work with our town officials. That's all I ask, as, as a Board of Selectmen, that you work, that you are open to work with, with our Board of-
How many times have we talked on the phone? How many times, like, I talked to Alex, I talked to them, talked to Tim Cruz, who directed me to you, okay?
Okay, so that's behind us. Let's move forward and get it resolved. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, and you'll report back to us, Chief?
Yes.
Once that's done. Thank you. Next item is vote on accepting a gift of antique fire apparatus. Scott, want to give us an update on that?
Yeah, there is a antique fire apparatus. I think many of us have seen it. It is down at Roger Woods.
It's actually at the Highway Department.
Oh, it moved.
It did.
So Roger has asked if the town would like it, and they're, you're setting up, are you setting up a fundraiser for it?
We have a gift account that this board set up already for it, and there have been a few small donations. We have met with the Community Preservation Commission, and will be applying for some money over the next several years to restore the fire truck. And in order to do that, it needs to be owned by the town, which was the intent all along.
Yeah, and actually, this board did vote to set up the fund and-
Right. So we need a motion and a vote to accept the gift from Mr. Woods of the antique fire truck.
I'll make a motion that the town of Abington accept the gift of the antique fire apparatus from Mr. Woods.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Foes? Thank you. And, Adam? Which one are we talking?
The Harbor to the Bay Bicycle Rally.
Yeah, where was at, 10. Anyone here for the Harbor to the Bay Bicycle Race? No? Okay, then let's move on to Adam. Adam Gunn? Is Veteran Services oper-
Oh, the chief's leaving. I was hoping he reached out and got my mother to take pictures as well, but it's not happening. Thank you for allowing me to speak today.
You want me to take your picture?
Okay, thank you. Just a few updates on a few things that have been going on from my office. We had the Abington Veterans Food Drive-Through at the Senior Center last Friday. Allison Sullivan, a handful of volunteers passed out over 1,000 pounds of food to veterans who drove through the Senior Center yesterday. Thanks to the wonderful Lee Ann Adams, we also were able to give away 3,000 pounds of food to local community and the Abington Food Pantry. We're looking into doing this possibly on a monthly basis in October, working with the Senior Center to maybe do this on a monthly basis throughout the wear months. Veteran stories, we just had Colby Boyle, prior senior at Abington High School, who's now in Marine Boot Camp. He interviewed Rick Franey and wrote his story. Rick is a Vietnam veteran with two Purple Hearts and also a retired Abington Police Chief. It's quite the story, if you haven't read it already. All the veteran stories that are recorded and written are on the Town of Abington website, on the Veteran Services. If you'd like your story told, or if you'd like to help tell one, please reach out to my office. The monthly Veterans Breakfast, we've been having at Martins Now for a few months. It's been a huge success. In April, we had 64 veterans walk through the door and filled his restaurant. He served every single one of the veterans that walked through. We have guest speakers every month from the VA and various organizations. The breakfasts are free and open to Abington veterans the first Wednesday of each month, although Martins will be closed on the week of the 4th of July, so we will not have one in July. Please thank Freddie Villa at Martins for allowing our veterans in his restaurant each month to be taken care of, and they take care of the bill and cover all the veterans' meals. The flagpole at the Rotary, the Rotary Project's coming along quite nicely, thanks to the work that Liz Shea has put in. We did find a flag company, the All-American Airborne Flag Company. It's a veteran-owned business who's taking care of the removal and installation of the flagpole. The flagpole, as you probably saw, driving up here, was removed last week, and it should be installed hopefully tomorrow, depending on the weather, but if not, later this week. Laidler Field Memorial, Troop 41 Eagle Scout candidate Mike O'Leary is working to restore the area and earnest each later memorial, as well as the flagpole that was put there 20 years ago. Last night, they had a fundraiser at the American Legion, raised $610 for the project. Estimated completion, date and time still to be determined, but they raised $610, and it's approximately $1,000 cost. SP4 Laidler was an Abington resident who enlisted in the Army and arrived in Vietnam on August 26, 1970. He was assigned to and served with the C Company, 228th Assault Helicopter Battalion. Laidler was serving as a gunner during a midair collision and became one of the eight men that were killed there that day. He's also honored at the Vietnam Veterans Memorial in Washington, DC. If you'd like to donate money for this project, you may write a check to Troop 41, and you can turn it in to Troop 41 or my office. This Wednesday at 6:00 p.m. at the American Legion, we have an Ambassador for Peace Medal Award Ceremony. This is for Korean War veterans that served boots on ground in Korea during the war, and is given out, awarded, excuse me, by the Korean Consulate this Wednesday night. At 6:00 p.m., we'll be honoring two living Korean War veterans and two deceased. Albert Donahue, George Cook, George Bazanson, and Neil Morgan. All are welcome to come and enjoy the ceremony. Please register by contacting my office. Purple Heart Town, the town of Abington, will join others in becoming a Purple Heart community, thanks to the Highway Department. 90 Purple Heart signs will be placed on every street entrance into Abington, as well as on the entrance into Town Hall, which is traditional. On Sunday, August 7th, which is also Purple Heart Day, we will hold a ceremony to commemorate the revealing of the first Purple Heart sign. We'll have Abington Purple Heart recipients present, as well as other family members of the deceased Purple Heart recipients. The first Purple Heart sign will be placed on Glenowitz Way, named after Richard Francis Glenowitz, who died through hostile action explosive device on May 31st, 1969, in Vietnam. Last, but certainly not least, Abington Veteran Services is now accepting resumes for part-time veterans' assistance. Anybody out there? Physician performs detailed bookkeeping, accounting, and technical duties to oversee and track monthly payments to veterans and dependents utilizing Massachusetts Chapter 115 benefits for low-income veterans. If you enjoy working one-on-one with people, helping others, are savvy of bookkeeping computers, I'd love to have you apply. Go to the Town of Abington website and apply, and come work with me and help the veterans in this community live better lives. Any questions at all?
Any questions for-
Scott, do you have any, like, a, do you have a write-up on that assistant? I had someone ask me today if I could just get them some information. I do, I can do it to you. Awesome, thank you.
It's on the website, isn't it?
It is on the website as well.
Under job, yeah.
Adam, what was the date for the Purple Heart dedication?
August 7th, Sunday, August 7th, which is Purple Heart Day.
Do you have a time yet on that?
Time to be determined still. Working with the American Legion and trying to fit their schedules, since they're helping us out with all that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Thank you for everything you do.
Okay, so... Guess we'll go to the center school reuse update.
Yes, the National Corps. Good evening. Let me just, I don't want to miss any names. So we're here tonight, benefit of Technical Assistance Grant from Mass Development that we received last year. Amanda Gregwaha works for Mass Development, wanted to be here but had a conflict at her schedule. So I said I would let you guys know. Mass Development paid for this technical assistance. They reached out to the Barrack Group and engaged them, who have prepared this whole report. This is Elizabeth Haney here with us tonight, who has been sort of our main point of contact and has been fabulous. and has been fabulous. We also received a $25,000 earmark from Allison Sullivan in last year's budget, and that money paid for, excuse me, the Habib group, which did the center school building study. Excuse me. I also wanna thank Pam and Ellen, who came to most every meeting we had in our check-in meetings throughout this whole process. And, like you, they are volunteers, and this was extra duty for them too. So, without further ado, I'll let Elizabeth...
I have a question.
Yep.
Well, thank you for having me. It's been great getting to know Abington. My name's Elizabeth Haney. As Liz said, I'm a community planner with Barret Planning Group. And sorry, my, let me just see, my, it's auto advancing, and I need to stop it. All right, hopefully this won't keep going without me. And so, as Liz said, Liz and Scott have been involved, as well as Ellen and Pam, who were representing the Affordable Housing Trust. And tonight, I'll be talking about some of the highlights from our site analysis, what we heard from the community. We'll be looking at some case study schools for what other communities have done with schools that they needed to dispose of, and then giving you folks a summary of the opportunities, as well as the constraints and challenges, and our recommendations. So, this is the site of where the center school is. So, you can see it's tucked into a residential neighborhood that's kind of on the corner of Summer Street and Washington Street. The school itself has entrances for cars on Thaxter Ave and Walnut Street. And so, some context for why are we talking about reusing this site? So, at the 2019 town meeting, the voters at town meeting voted to authorize the selectmen to dispose of all or portions of this property. And so, it's important to note that though the school is surrounded by parking and a playground right next to the school, the site's actually on a pretty big parcel. It's 13 acres, and that includes Murphy Field and a pretty big wooded area between the school and the fields. And so, in talking with Scott Lamazie, the town's town manager, he's indicated that it's the town's intention to preserve Murphy Field, as well as parking and some access to the field. And so, some of the logistics for how do you get a car in there, that's gonna depend on what you do at the center school site, so that hasn't been subdivided or officially protected in any way at this time. And so, we'll get into some of what we found in the site analysis. So, here's the school, if you didn't attend there. But this is a school that was built in 1939, as part of the Works Progress Administration, and it is on Town Water and Sewer. And this is, it's kind of hard to read, but these are the original blueprints from 1939. These blueprints are of actually the North School, but the North School and the Center School were sister schools, so they share the same layout. Six classrooms on each floor with a gymnasium attached. And so, here's a photo of the gym at the center school, and then what one of those classrooms looks like. So, in pretty good shape, beautiful red, beautiful wood floors. As part of this work, the town contracted with a separate consultant, which was Habib and Associates. And so, they actually did a code review and an assessment of the building's condition. And so, on the positive side, the things they found in that code review was that the roof framing is in good, good condition. From what they could see of the masonry and the floor framing, there was no structural deficiencies. And the facade's in pretty good condition with a few defects. That said, the roof system has exceeded its serviceable life. If you do reuse this building, it's gonna need a new roof. And there may be some deterioration in the first floor framing, but that need to be confirmed by a structural engineer before you did anything with the building. And if you do decide to reuse the building, it'll need all-new windows. So, that's kind of the building. And instead, taking a step back, you know, we wanted to highlight some of the natural features on the site. So, you've got bedrock pretty close to the surface, and then you do have that wooded area. And the picture on the right is the view of what it looks like if you walk from the school down to Murphy Field. This is an aerial view of what the site looks like from the air, so it really, truly is tucked into among a bunch of single-family homes. Both the field and the school are surrounded on all sides with single-family homes. But this, but the school is pretty centrally located in Abington. It has easy access to shop, some shops and things like that over on Washington Street, and it is within three-quarters of a mile of the commuter rail. So, here's an aerial, just to point out kind of what it's close to. And so, you can see that center ring is a quarter mile, then it goes a half mile, and then a mile. And so, you can see that there's, you know, a few amenities within a half a mile, and then, you know, within a mile, you know, really quick drive to the Senior Center, and pretty close to Target and Stop &amp; Shop if someone wanted to do shopping from this site. So, part of, as part of our analysis, we also looked at kind of what's happening in the housing market and what's the need for housing. So, this is a chart of Abington's home prices from 2002 to 2022. And so, you can see from 2013 to 2022, the median home price has almost doubled, so $255 back in 2013, up to $500,000 as of the time we made this chart this year. You see similar, a similar trend in Abington rents. These are just rents in larger buildings, but what you can see is for a two-bedroom, rents are around $2,300 a month, and projected to keep going up. And so, kind of, you know, with some market analysis, we also looked at housing need and to kind of get a sense of what are folks at the Housing Authority hearing? We reached out to them, and we got, we, they told us what they're seeing, and how many folks are on their waiting list. So, for the elderly buildings that are in Abington, there's 109 units, and the number of folks who are on the centralized waiting list, there's almost 4,000. And so, you know, for those folks on the waiting list who are hoping to find a unit, there's about eight to 12 units that are opening up every year. There are three family units that are part of that Housing Authority stock, or, sorry, two. And the waiting list for those, there's about 6,000 people looking for, for housing there. And there's only two units, and those families, you know, have found secure housing, so typically those units aren't opening up every year. So, that's some, some context on kind of, you know, what's the town seeing in terms of need for affordable housing? And as part of our work, you know, understanding what is affordable housing wasn't, folks had different conceptions. So, one thing we like to do, so if you work in housing, and someone comes into your office and wants, says, you know, "I'd like to apply," you'll take their documents and their income, and you'll compare it to this chart. And so, what this means are there's different categories of income, and then you look to see how many people are in the household, and that's gonna dictate whether folks apply. So, you know, someone couldn't qualify for low-income housing if they're one person, their income has to be lower than if it's a family with three kids. But still, this doesn't really, like, make it flushy for what, what does this mean? Who would this be? So, one thing we like to do is to compare, you know, what is, what does an income category look like against real jobs and real working people? So, what you can see in here is we have wage data from folks who, this is wage data from Abington, careers in Abington, and what categories they might fall into. So, you can see in the, under the low-income category, a daycare provider who's married to an insurance agent who has one, one child, they qualify under the low-income category, whereas someone working in a nursing home with one child might qualify under the extremely low-income category. So, that's just some background. And then, we also worked with the community. We did a survey and did a community meeting. We had 351 responses to that survey. And so, what we found in the survey was that most folks who responded to the survey reported rarely using the site. And the concerns that most folks had were about added traffic and the impact of any development on the drinking water supply. Preserving the wooded areas on the site was extremely important, according to folks who took the survey, both, you know, the woods between the site and homes and the woods at the center of the site. We also found that the community was almost evenly split on whether to convert the school to senior housing or to demolish it, to create more open space in Abington. When we zeroed in on the survey results for folks who said they lived in Abington, there was a little bit more support for creating senior housing. And then I have a few slides with survey results that I can go back to, but I won't read them off, just in the interest of time. And so, that's what we heard from the community. But then we also turned and we looked at what are other communities doing? And so, some of the schools that we looked at were the McKellawayan School in Bridgewater. Auburn had sister schools as well, the Bancroft and Stone Schools, that they converted into affordable senior housing. In Bald, out in Baldwinville in Central Mass, they're in the process of converting an old school into affordable housing and market-rate housing. And up in Swambskut, they converted a historic school into affordable housing. Kind of a different flavor. Up in Pepperell, they had a much larger school, but they actually converted that school to a community center with art space and a commercial kitchen. That school's a little bit older, a little bit bigger than the other schools I just mentioned. And so, in looking at all those schools, the kind of common themes that came out were some of the schools attempted to sell the schools for profit, but they didn't find any success, they didn't get any responses. A couple of these towns used an RFI process. So, an RFI is a request for information, where you ask the development community or community groups to give ideas about what should be done with the building. And some towns did that in order to know what they put in a request for proposals, and that's where you would actually go out to get bids on this site, or on a site. In those communities where they added affordable housing and went through development, it was really important to involve the community and neighbors from the beginning. And then again, when you're thinking about those, those RFPs, it's really competitive, and it's hard out there. These towns only received one or two responses when they did put these schools out to bid. And then, all the, all the projects where they added affordable housing to the historic school involved adding more units outside the footprint of the school. And some of these towns had success. They added the schools to the National Register of Historic Places, and that opened up subsidies that they wouldn't have been able to get otherwise. And local communities can be supportive if local dollars are contributed to a project, and local officials submit letters of support. And this is just a little summary of, you know, how many RFP responses and how long it took, how much it cost. And then, what the breakdown is. So, you can see the, the blue and the red, that's the new building. The gold is how many units you fit in the historic school. And so, why did they add those additional units? It spread expensive rehabilitation costs across more units. This is expensive construction. Those schools in the case studies, it was 370 to 507 per unit to make those projects happen. It also made them more competitive for state dollars for subsidy, so that you could use low-income housing tax credits. And it also meant that, you know, if you're gonna operate a building, you, it's big enough, you can pay a full-time maintenance property manager, or if you're talking about seniors, having residence services there. And so, looking forward, some of the constraints and challenges that Abington should keep in mind, the school is vacant, and the potential for rehabilitation could get worse with no action. Neighbors who walked the site with us and folks who took the survey reported the schools often used it as a hangout site for youth who use it for drinking. And you could see it when we walked around. There were broken windows and signs of trespassing, some spray paint. And as we talked about in the code review, the roof has ended its serviceable life, so it would need a roof replacement as of today, and that's not in the future. To get a sense of what it would cost if the town was to just demolish this, the town has worked to explore putting a new fire station at the North School, which is a sister school, so similar scale, materials, vintage. And the quote that the town received for that indicated that it was gonna cost about $1.2 million to bring that building down and to remediate the hazardous materials that were in that school. And so, then, if you're looking towards how would you reuse the school so you're not demolishing it, but you still have to rehab it? The consultants the town contracted with developed a couple typical layout plans. So, you can see it's really converting those old classrooms into apartments, as well as the gym in this scenario. And then, just this is a slight difference, there's a lounge over in the gym. And so, if you were gonna redevelopment, redevelop this site and shift those, those classrooms into apartments, you'd still have to deal with asbestos, and you'd still have to deal with the likely presence of lead paint. Those layout drawings I just showed, they show about 15 or 16 units that could fit within the historic building. They, that's probably ambitious, 'cause if you look back at these layouts, you'll see there's really skinny units over on the left side of the screen. And if you're thinking about seniors who need a five-foot turning radius, that might be a little bit ambitious, to say those, those side units could be appropriate for seniors. And so, if you're looking at, you know, we just wanna use the existing footprint of the school, it's smaller than where the most money is the state, is available at the state to make affordable housing happen. The state has this subsidy program called the Community Scale Housing Initiative, but that project has development cost limits of $350,000 per unit, so it's unclear if that would really work for rehabbing a historic school. And then, if you, if you are thinking about redevelopment, if you wanna start digging on that site where there's that bedrock, that can increase project costs pretty fast. So, this, those are some of the constraints, some of the opportunities. So, this is a 13-acre site. Even doing some development on the school site, there should be, it should be possible to preserve some open space. In some of those case studies I showed before, the developers actually invested in fields or playgrounds. So, in Auburn, they invented, invested 25 grand in each of the playgrounds at those sister schools that they worked on. Using the site for housing could also address housing needs. So, if you go look at the town's comprehensive plan or the housing production plan, that has goals to both create more affordable housing for seniors, as well as use town-owned properties to add affordable housing. And then, if you did have affordable housing on this site, it could contribute to the subsidized housing initiative, where you're looking to get to 10%. Abington's currently at 7.7%. The site is fairly close to the Senior Center, so some folks say sometimes, you know, if you align services, that can be assisted living light for residents, and there are some state dollars available to support projects with enhanced services like that. So, one unique opportunity at this site is if you did use this for 100% affordable housing, it'd be kind of different than some of the 40B projects that Abington has seen recently. Some of those 40B projects, they're mostly market rate, and they have a portion of affordable housing. This could be an opportunity to add 100% affordable housing. And because it is, and because there are dollars available at the state level for affordable housing and at the federal level for historic tax credits, shifting this school into affordable, into affordable housing could actually be a good strategy for preserving this school that a lot of folks in Abington have connections to. And it would be possible to use, it's called the Local Initiative Program. Some folks talk about it as the Friendly 40B. And so, that's where the town can work collaboratively with the developer to make sure what's proposed is in line with, you know, community, neighborhood ideals, the community and the town, that the design that moves forward is something you work on together. And so, our recommendations are to clarify the status of Murphy Field, so just to make, the community was very concerned about what was gonna happen there, but to communicate with them about what the next steps are in protecting that site. To engage the developer community in the RFI process, that can help get the town kind of understanding what would need to happen to convert this to affordable housing. You can get some ideas, some prospective designs visible. And so, that would fit into a larger planning process like this. So, we went through a planning process and identified kind of reuse criteria. If you did an RFI, you could decide whether you wanted to issue an RFP. Hopefully, you'd get a developer with a proposal you really liked, and then they would go through a few rounds of applying for funding, go under construction, and then it would be ready for occupancy. And so, you know, this can be anywhere from three to five years. Those funding rounds can take multiple years. It seems like there might be more public engagement on housing that would be useful. There's kind of different ideas about what, who would live in affordable housing and who it would serve. And then, some of the other communities, they had success where a developer was selected through an RFP, and they actually had designed turets with the community, with the community, and they helped design the building and the program. And so, last, if you did want to move forward with, with renovating the school, getting the school in the National Register of Historic Places will make it easier to make the project happen. It brings additional dollars that make that cost of construction, that cost of remediation lower. And so, that can make it so that the project's actually possible. And that's, that's what I have for you guys tonight.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? Please come up and speak into the microphone, give your address.
My name's Mike Wallace. I'm at 88 Summer Street. I have bought this property. I see you preserve, saying you wanna preserve Murphy Field and a little bit of the woods. How come preserving all the woods? How come preserving all the woods aren't on the options?
Everything's an option. We haven't made any decisions.
When you point, when you put it up on the screen like that, and you've got it all shaded, and you've got a big piece of woods not shaded.
There's nothing proposed there yet.
Yeah.
That was my editing of a slide to show that the town's intention is to preserve the field and a way to get to the field. It's purely, it's symbolic.
No decisions have been made on anything up there at this point, this is just all informational.
Okay.
Thank you.
I mean, the survey results, I think they put preserving the trees over making senior housing, so I think it's a safe bet that every tree will be saved in that lot.
Ron, you were next.
Ronald Howell, 149 Walnut Street, I also abut the property. At the community meeting that we had on Zoom, it was stated that the town had no intention of expanding from the footprint of the school. And yet, according to the survey and all the other example projects or whatever, it was the school being reused, but then an additional building being built.
Again, there's been no decisions made whatsoever, this is all purely informational.
But I think it is important to note that, you know, that certainly, any expansion of that building would probably be way too expensive. I mean, it is not that the bedrock is close to the surface, it's coming right out of the surface.
Right, bedrock's there and.
So, the other part of it is, though, is to continue, look, we're going to spend either a million, two, to tear this down, or we can do a little more homework, and still, if we want to do an RFI, there may be some opportunities, and there may be a possibility that someone could come in there for a dozen or 16 units. I, you know, again, we may even want to pair it with the North School. You know, when we started this endeavor, the North School was still in play as a possibility for a fire station, so we really focused on this. But at this point, if we wanted to go forward with an RFI, we may even just bundle the two projects together, which may give somebody a development, A, that gives them the, you know, the cost as far as maintenance and having property maintenance might be more reasonable if they had both buildings, and it may give them the number of units that if they could do them simultaneously, it might work. But at this point, you know, again, we're just kind of looking at what the conceptuals are. And it is good to note, though, and I'm glad we did realize that, that most of these other success stories did something that we're really not interested in, which is developing the site. It's not, it's very obvious to me and to just the discussions I've had the night that we were on the Zoom meeting, and then again, in other discussions we've had, that the best reuse of that property is to preserve that wooded area, all of it, and to preserve that field, and to preserve access to that baseball field. So, that being said, you know, using what we have is the road we want to go now. Where that'll lead us, I don't know. At the end of the day, we may still be looking to spend a million, two, plus to tear it down, because then you'd have to, you know, obviously fix the site after we've got a big hole.
Right.
And if that's the case to create more open space, that's fine, but I think we have to do a little bit more homework for us.
Okay.
But let's be clear that these are all just ideas, nothing is set in stone, the building's not being redeveloped tomorrow, if ever. So, these are just options that we're trying to look at to find out the best use of that and the North School, and try and do what the town wants us to do.
Correct, and I think, Scott, I was on the Zoom call as well, it was very much unanimous that preserving the footprint of the Center School property and the woods, the park, that was, if there was one thing that we took away from that, was that's what the community wants. So, I think any decision we do making, moving forward, we keep that as the forefront, that we are preserving the footprint.
Well, and I think as Elizabeth will tell you, the next step is asking for input from the development community. So, the next step is to say, what sort of thing would work and what would you see here? And if that's what they come back with, then that's not what we're interested in, then we make a decision from there.
Elizabeth, you mentioned, I was kind of intrigued by it, the National Register of Historical Sites, so what, can you elaborate more, what if we did, what the town could potentially get if it was deemed as a historical site?
Yeah, so, if you, a town can put a building on the National Register of Historic Places, and that opens up an additional source of tax credit equity that isn't available to a new construction building. So, the project in Bridgewater is a good example, where they worked with a consultant to get the school on the National Register, and then that opened up additional dollars just to make a very expensive project less expensive. Because in each of these historic schools, you know, you have to remediate, and then also you have to ensure the structure's good for these schools, and in a lot of cases, that's more expensive than new construction.
Maybe, maybe this is too much, but how much, like hypothetically, or actually not hypothetically, Bridgewater, how, what did they receive to have that school be deemed as a historical place?
So, I think you have to document the history and submit an application to the National Register. And so, typically, in Massachusetts, folks would, work with a historic consultant in order to make that happen. So, in Bridgewater, they worked with, I think the woman's name was Jen Goldson, and so they worked actually, before they put the schools out to RFP, they worked to get the schools, or to get the school on the National Register, so that when they went to go do something with it, there was additional subsidy available to make what they wanted happen.
I would caution, and I think we would probably want to be really sure on the path that we're going before we do such a thing, because we don't want to make it difficult.
To do something there, right.
They preserved that school and then added another building to that school?
Yeah, it's in the very back of this drawing, you probably can't see it.
Well, not necessarily, I mean, and I'm not looking to build more than the previous footprint again, but if you did that, you could still build an additional building.
Yeah.
The North School, you know, seems like it would be a better site for that.
Yeah, so.
To expand.
You can't really see it, but in the image on the right here, that's the Mary Stone School in Auburn, and you can't see it, but off the back of this school, they actually, they had an addition. And so, it was, it's interesting, because it was part of a historic, it was on the National Register, it comes with the requirement. So, the new addition had to look like it matched with the historic building, which was pretty interesting.
Could you go, an addition on, but could you, could you build up on these buildings as well, like if you wanted to build like a third floor onto it?
I am not a structural engineer, so I can't speak to that.
It'd be difficult on these buildings.
I mean, if you're going to make it ADA, you're going to put elevators, you have to put elevators, and then you have to do all these things, I'm just curious.
I think, I mean, at some point, you just get to the, that per-unit cost is going to be too much. So, even adding a third floor, you're only going to gain six units at best.
I agree, I'm just, I mean, the buildings are as small as they are. Like, look at that building in Bridgewater, they had 38 units. I mean, it seems like a lot of historic buildings are small, so you have a very minimal number of units, so, I mean, the cost is going to be high at that alone, let alone building, you know, adding on if you will.
Yeah, it's certainly without subsidies, and without the tax credits for it being, if we made it a historic building, I, not, we're not likely to see this project go forward, those things, but, you know, it's still a little early to say.
Build a skyscraper.
We can build a skyscraper. In Brantley.
That's K. Damasio in Abington, Mass.
Anything else from anyone?
Who's that?
Oh, yes. Please come up and state your name.
My name's Elijah Crist, I live on Walnut Street.
You have to use the microphone, please.
Step right up to the podium right there.
They're recording. Thanks.
My name's Elijah Crist, and I live on Walnut Street. I've been on that property twice this week. My kids learned to ride their bikes on that property. A couple of questions that I had. One, I guess maybe just preface this, I couldn't help but feel when I read the survey and then listened to the discussion, the Zoom meeting, that very much of this seemed to be steered towards a certain outcome. And the question specifically that I had was, in the survey that went out, where, I know that the online survey was available for residents to take, but I also know that there were paper surveys that went out. I was curious if we could be made aware of, like, what portion of those were paper surveys that were returned in the survey results, and also, where those surveys were targeted to? How were people given those surveys? Were they all handed out at the senior center, or were they handed out, you know, to residences or whatnot? Because I do feel like this was pushed a certain direction, even the language during the meeting and the language during our presentation seems to be, how are we going to develop this, and what kind of affordable housing options are we going to put into place here? When in reality, I look around and I see a lot of my neighbors, and the conversations that I'm familiar with in town, obviously, we're very interested in this, I haven't heard anybody that wants this place developed. I mean, I know that there are, you know, the Senior Housing Committee wants it done, none of the neighbors do.
What would you like to see there?
Ideally, I would have liked to see the building not wasted to begin with. A fair amount of maintenance would have gone a long way. We've got a bad habit in this town of letting our resources go to waste.
Fair, but here we are, so what would you like to see in there?
So, wave a magic wand, I'd put, I'd put up, well, we know it needs a roof, that doesn't cost 1.2 million dollars. We know it needs to be cleaned up, that isn't going to cost 1.2 million dollars to reuse it, there may be some abatement that's necessary. But I would have liked to see the school restored before it got too late, if it is too late, bulldoze it and put a.
Restore to what? What would you like to see?
What would you like to see there, is my question? I know, we all know.
Right, right now?
Yeah, right now.
At this, at this point, I would love to, I would love to see the building used for the town's purposes, whether that be recreational, or I'd like to see it bulldozed, leveled, and left open for people to use. And have the, most importantly, I think, let me just get to the gist of your question. I'd like to see the town assume responsibility for its assets, stop trying to liquidate them, stop saying, you know, developer with a gleam in our eyes, and hold on to what we have. I don't, I don't think anybody I've talked to feels strongly that we need to shove more residential units in there. But specifically, my questions again were, how is this, how is this polling targeted? I'm aware of online, and anybody could have gone online to do that, but a fair amount of it, I know, was paper responses. I'm just curious where those came from.
I think Pience is coming up behind you. Thank you.
I filled out a paper one, by the way.
Ah, you had to pick a survey?
Yeah, it was right down.
They were left down at the senior housing on Glenwood Way, they were left at the senior housing on Sharap, because traditionally, those are people without access to computers. It was to give them an opportunity, and I have to say, very few responses came from the one on Glenwood Way. It was left at the senior center, it was left at the library, we brought it voting day.
Town meeting?
So, town meeting and town hall. So, those were your opportunities to grab a paper ballot.
And online.
And online.
Were you targeting seniors?
No, not, not.
Voting day?
Election Day.
Okay.
The library, and then those other areas that traditionally, they don't have access to computers. So, there wasn't a target, it was providing some opportunities. And I can tell you, maybe four came from that senior housing down there, maybe.
Yeah, actually, yeah.
Doesn't it say right in, don't we have a pie chart?
And I have to say, at the end of the day, there was less than 100. And how many did you say we had responses?
So, we, I mean, there's a pie chart here with, right, this?
There's a, there's a pie chart with the ages on there.
So, just, let me just, yeah, I mean, real quick, 18 to 24 was 5%, 25 to 34 was 18%, 35 to 44 was 26%, 45 to 54 was 16%.
Actually, take this whole thing, I have two.
55 to 64 was 19%, 65 to 74 was 11%, 75 and older was 5%. So, actually, the majority is 18 to 54, I mean, that's three-quarters of your respondents.
And I just want to mention to you guys that I've talked to Kevin Tocchi, and he's going to break this part out of your meeting, and we're going to put it on the Center School reuse website, along with all of that documentation, all of the studies and tonight's presentation.
And you had asked about the breakdown of, you know, what's paper, what's, what was online, so functionally, Liz, I think you entered the paper survey into the online, so the 351 is all encompassing of folks who typed it in online, and then what Liz transcribed from the surveys that she picked up.
Okay. It's just, the reason I had the question is that my conversations, and not just with my favorite neighbors, but to people around town, maybe I just come off as abrasive, so I haven't heard many people that were excited about having affordable housing in the area.
So, if I can just add to that, the idea, and obviously, you know, this is a piece of property owned by the whole town, is to make sure that before we move on with this, we're exhausting any other possibilities of reuse, as you said. There was really no obvious use for it by the school department anymore. And there is glaring need for senior housing, and affordable senior housing in this town. It's not something that we're, you know, we made up. So, we just wanted to see if this is a possibility to address it. It's not that we're staring at it one way or another, but we want to do our due diligence. So, and as far as the Affordable Housing Trust, I won't speak for them, I think they'll speak for themselves, but they certainly were extremely open-minded in this process, and I don't know that they actually support it one way or another at this point. This is care and custody of the Board of Selectmen right now.
Looks like 450 people took it, that's what I'm getting out of this, that page?
I may not have updated my slides.
The survey received from 450 people? I mean, if you do the breakdown of that, 65% was under 54 years old, so 300 people out of the 450 were under 54, and then 150 people were age 54 or older, or 55 or older.
Yeah, I know that it was, it was surprising in the surveys that we do with other communities that we work with, we were actually really impressed with the kind of younger folks who came out to take this survey, which isn't typical in every community we see.
It's going to be, yeah, it's going to be about $2 million. So, one thing that we have to keep in mind to do the abatement of the asbestos and whatever needs to be taken out of there, and demolish that building and make it a usable surface, is probably upwards of $2 million now. So, that's going to come out of our tax levy.
How much would the roof cost? I mean, the roof, I know you were talking about the roof, but roofs are expensive, I mean.
Well, the roof in the library, it's going to be a million dollars.
That has to be close to a million-dollar roof?
Yeah, unfortunately, it probably is close to a million dollars.
I mean, I just got a quote for over like 20.
So, there's no easy answer here, and we're just trying to look at everything, but if we were to keep it, it's going to cost us a million dollars for the roof, it's going to cost us a million dollars for the asbestos abatement, it's going to cost us a couple million dollars for windows, so, there's heating system, everything probably.
Before we make a decision, we're going to have numbers, I would be careful just throwing numbers out there.
Well, we do have.
As you're going, and I know it's an educated guess.
No, we have the.
The demolition number came out of the study for the North School, right. And that was, I don't know, how many years ago?
But that's not included in.
At least two and a half, three years ago.
That 1.2 is not.
That's not a good number.
Those are the numbers we're guessing on, new roofs where.
Well, we're never, we're never going to put a roof on the building. That's not something that we're going to do. And if this does go further, we won't be doing it. We would, if we finally decided, and I'm not saying we should, or would, or will, but if we finally decided 16 units of senior housing made sense there, and that's what we found through an RFI, that this was something that could be done and there was actual interest in it, an RFP would go out, and we would say to the development world, tell us what you want, the property's going to be yours, the project's going to be yours, here are the guidelines that you have to follow, or you're not going to get this property and you're not going to get the project. And those guidelines are going to be very specific to us, but it is not going to be our project or our property anymore, except for where, like I said, we would do a subdivision of land, where we would keep the wooded area, access to it, and the ball field. Now, that's, that's the biggest extreme at this point, but unless we had some other critical use for that building that all of a sudden came up, that was a town building, we have no intention of spending money doing windows, roofs, or anything else, it would.
So, I just wanted, the more we talk in hypotheticals, the more misinformation or misconstrued we're going to be, and people are going to start thinking. So, you need to. So we need to be more about action, get the, if we want to do our.
RFI.
RFI next, then let's do it. If we want to start with the historical, get in historical status on the buildings, then let's do it. But I don't want to talk about, we could do this, we could do that, 400,000, 200,000, 3 million, because the next day people calling saying, you know, I heard you put an ice rink up there for a hundred million dollars.
Tim has a magical wand.
We're putting an ice rink up there?
Center School is going to be done overnight like this.
Chief, what do you have to say?
Just quickly, just two things the gentleman said. First, he said he's up there with his family. I was up there last week, our, our family, the firefighters were training up there as well. And I was walking around the perimeter myself and I actually went to that school, so I remember that school in its heyday. There's a lot of vandalism up there, both internally and externally. We have been working hard with the town to try to keep people out, to try to board it up. The kids are getting in there. Beyond that, the graffiti is not family friendly. There's no playway to put this. I don't know how to correct that. I don't, you know, whether it's just painting over or whatever, but it's, it's getting, it's, it's deteriorating. So there's that aspect and I, I'm aware of that and so there's that end of it. The other thing is, you know, why aren't we using them now? It was very expensive to maintain both buildings. North and Center School are both the twin buildings and when they became vacant, this all goes back to the sprinkler system with the fire department. We always own this. They were wet systems, meaning that the entire buildings, the pipes that the sprinkler, the sprinkler pipes are always full of water, which means you have to heat the entire building. And twice we had power outages during one of the winter storms, this is going back about four or five years, both buildings froze. We found out about this, I think it was, I think it was the North School that actually had the most damage, where the pipes were breaking and, you know, we got the alarm and when we realized what was happening, I immediately sent an engine to Center School to try to shut that valve down because the same thing was happening, which it did. So there's an immense amount of damage with the sprinkler systems in both buildings. It was, the monthly cost to heat those buildings, it was going through the roof and this is back about four or five years ago. So it's, I don't want to say the town just didn't maintain the buildings. It was extremely expensive, the upkeep for two vacant buildings that really could have gone on forever. So, you know, we tried eliminating some of the, just heating the boiler room. We worked on that for a while, trying to drain the pipes down and just heat the boiler room, but even that was, it really wasn't feasible. So that's kind of what led to this. So that if, if the town decided tomorrow, let's just open up the buildings, that's not going to be an easy fix because we, we did get estimates at the time to, can we repair the sprinkler system? It, it wasn't even worth it. And that was, wasn't worth it to maintain a vacant building. And that was looking at the visible damage that they could see without going through the walls. The buildings were both built in 1933, I think. So, you know, construction of that period, those, maybe the original sprinkler system from that period, early 50s at the latest. So that, that's kind of how they got into that condition, unfortunately.
But I agree, we really, it is a shame to see the buildings in the condition they're in. I mean, we've taken care of the frolio, but it is, regardless, something needs to be done, so we need to move it forward. I mean, this has been way too long.
Center School's getting a brand new because it's out of the way. The North School is really, we're seeing it's not getting the same vandalism because it's, it's so light.
Right.
The Center School is kind of up and over.
Thank you, you had a question?
My name is Mary Snyder. I live at 132 Walnut Street, so my view is Center School from my front porch and I don't like the graffiti either. My question is, you loosely use the terms senior, affordable housing and affordable housing, two different words in my dictionary. So are we looking to do 16 units that are just going to be senior or are you looking at affordable housing, which could mean families? That's.
No, I think the, the sentiment that we had in the direction we were planning was senior housing and it probably will have an affordable component to it, senior.
Which I understand as senior affordable housing, but then when you get to family affordable housing, that means many more people than you would.
Well, I don't think they'd be suitable at 800 square feet.
They're going to be like one bedroom units.
Again, I.
But the idea, the idea and the concern that I saw and the concern that I got from the Affordable Housing Trust was there was a big need for affordable senior housing in this town and I think some of the charts we show, show that. So, yeah, that would be the direction that we would be going in.
Because it seems like some of these towns, they started that way possibly and then added, like the one that added on and ended up with 38 units?
No, I, so I can tell you, the schools in Auburn, Auburn was similar to Abington. Auburn identified a need for senior housing and they put out their RFP specifying that those schools were to be redeveloped for senior housing. I believe Swamskett was similar, but then in Bridgewater and Templeton, those are actually, they're family housing, so they are not age restricted. All of them are affordable housing, whether it's senior housing, whether it's not. If there's an income restriction, you could call that affordable housing. And then if you, you do restrict it to a specific population, that might be 55 plus, it might be 62 plus. So the schools on this chart, those schools in Auburn, those two sister schools, those are age restricted and the school in Swamskett is also age restricted. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know when we did the community outreach, Scott, on Zoom, the community from hearing from the residents that if anything was to go in that school or development there, it would be affordable senior housing. I know because people in our groups were talking specifically against family housing, affordable family housing, but more specifically, they wanted the town was centered on, if anything, affordable senior housing.
Well, like Scott said, if it goes out to an RFP, we will specify what it has to be. And I think we're a ways.
Because I know a lot of the residents, they typically count just the, the services for the town if we, if it, if it potentially would be affordable family housing.
No housing is affordable at the same age, unfortunately.
This is true.
But, yeah, it should be senior.
You know, the services, especially with the school department.
I think the sentiment is senior housing.
Affordable senior housing.
Affordable senior housing.
Yeah, we did ask in the survey if, what type of housing and, and senior housing was the only one that jumped out.
Okay, any other questions, Kenny?
Ken Coyle, 222 High Street, and I am not in the butter. I'm also a member of the Affordable, Abington's Affordable Housing Trust, which is fairly new in town. We're just getting our feet wet. We have a lot to learn. We also have four members, myself and three other members here in this room tonight, so I would hope that they are affordable, affordable housing. In one of our very first meetings, it was decided that we wanted to bring affordable housing to Abington with a priority for Abington seniors and Abington young in the form of low interest, first time home buyers loan. But our priority was affordable housing for seniors. So, and also to note is I'm on the historical commission, so we will get right to work on trying to, you know, see if we can hire someone to get, fast track getting them on the historical. We probably have to wait to make sure it's something that's going to fit into the RFI. I do want to make one note of the Bridgewater project. And it's funny too, because I was driving by there and I saw it and I looked it up and I thought it was really exciting, but I'm kind of a nerd. But it uses all three forms of the CPA funds. So historical, the school is historical, it has playground in back and new playground in back, so it uses that form of park and rec money from the CPA. And finally, housing, obviously. So this is something that could happen up here, I really truly believe. There's also a project in Rockland now with a Holy Family, Family School. The difference in that is that that's privately owned. We have the advantage of owning this property. I just read on it today, it's 27 units and the town is requiring that the builders make it 60% affordable, so anyone that fits in that bracket, you have to be, make less than 60%. And it's also age restricted where you have to be 62, which I just turned 62, so maybe it might have, I don't want, I don't really want to move to Rockland, but I just want to, I guess the question I think that our committee has is, is what is the next step and what do you need us to do? I would imagine that you would give us a recommendation as to what's going to happen to the property or, so we just kind of need to know, you know? And the other thing I just want to make note, and I'm going to show my age, but I was on the Griffins Dairy Committee and we hemmed and hawed, we hemmed and hawed, nobody could make a decision. And then finally, the barn, the most historical feature on, on the property burned down and it was sad. So this, every year we wait and this project is not going to happen overnight, it's going to take years. So, and the building is falling apart, so we, I don't mean to rush you guys, but.
It's been 10 years. It's not, not much of a rush.
Hopefully we come up with something, you know, and again, we're not pushing either way, you know? We haven't taken, Scott mentioned, we haven't taken any votes as to what we want to do with the property because it's not our call. You know, I was on the selectman when we decided to turn these two properties, nobody wanted these properties. And we were also smart enough not to sell them. We didn't sell them. We're hanging on to them. That's a good thing and a bad thing, you know, because we're hanging on to them, we might have to demolish them and pay for the fee to demolish them. But we also made sure we're not selling it to the highest bidder. So that's a good thing. We, we own the properties and that's going to help us when we go up to bid.
So Scott, what do you think is the next step?
I would just, if this board would authorize us to begin the process for an RFI and get some interest in.
Just to see what's out there for interest?
Yeah.
And if there's no interest, then we're back to the, even if there is interest, it doesn't mean we're.
I mean, let's find out, we'll find out from the development community what they would have an appetite for and at what level of financial commitment would be on our side.
What timeframe would we be looking for an RFI?
We could put it together fairly quick. I mean, it's fairly, it's an informal process, it doesn't have, it's not like an RFP that's required, but so I think, I think putting it together, but we probably looking at a few months, three to six months anyways.
Okay.
Yeah, we want to get as many, as much response as possible.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, we'll discuss options that, like I said, bundle the two projects too.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Pam Howe, 149 Walnut Street, and I just wanted to point out a few things that I, I got here later, I had a family emergency, so a little, I've been helping my mom who had a fall, so anyway. We talked about the footprint of the school. I also wanted, you know, just to make everybody else aware that there are two projects going in down the street from this. We have affordable housing, 40B going in down by the train station. That's got 200 and something units, I think, going in down there. And then the other project across the street behind the senior center off of Plymouth Street, 144 units of age restricted senior housing. There's no sidewalks on Summer Street, so, you know, access to the senior center, you know, there'd have to be, there'd have to be cars. You know, I just feel like it's not really the best site for this with the development going on in the community with the traffic. You know, it's, it's kind of just like a nestled community thing. I would like to see the school taken down and it left the open space. I think that was kind of a lot of what they had on the graphs that they did. 38%, if there's anything in particular, you think the town should consider in redeveloping the site, open space, trees, woods. 27% services, police, fire, schools. You know, it is going to draw on the services too because it's, it's housing. I'm wondering, you know, we talked about getting the school demolished and how we'd pay for that. I don't know if there's funding out there for, you know, developing open space, developing green space. I see that sometimes online or in the newspaper and that would might be something to look into also, to see if we could get help with the cost of that. I also know the development going in down the street, and this is just my brain and the way it works, they have no recreational space, the one going in by the train station. They're, I've been going to all those meetings now for a couple of years and those residents are going to have, you know, no park, no green space there. I mean, maybe that developer would be willing to do something to help us out with something with the school, to help out their, their residents. Just, you know, I've heard of, of the, you know, friendly 40Bs where they'll do something to help the town, you know, so.
That hasn't been the most friendly back and forth.
It has not been, it has not been the most friendly.
Maybe if we started off with that instead.
I know, I know. And I know we were.
I think we kind of handled that poorly.
We were even trying to find sidewalks, you know, but hey.
Now we're stuck with twice as many apartments and 40B.
Exactly, but, and you know, you know, it, you know, it's, it's an idea. I mean, I'm just trying to come up with ideas and stuff, but like I said, I, I think, you know, there's other options too. There's, there's land behind Sharav and there's land on Glenwood's Way that, that, you know, is owned and by the senior housing complexes that might also be something that can be developed into senior housing down the line. That would be another, you know, just trying to find, you know, I'd like to come up with solutions when, you know, when I have an idea, so just putting it out there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I think we need to look at all these ideas and, I mean, we can certainly look and see if there is any funding to create open space there. I don't know, once we got our open space plan.
Yeah, again, that's a, for another subject, but, yeah, we are working on a grant that will help us get the open space plan updated and that will make us eligible for further grant money that can go into trails and rehabbing open space. And I don't think it'll get us enough to tear down a building, but it would be nice. But we, yeah, I, I agree, you know, we definitely want to look at all options.
Okay, is there anything else on this subject? Okay, thank you all. Moving forward, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you.
The next item is discussion and possible vote to close Island Grove from dusk to dawn.
Yeah, so again, this is another area where the police department has been having issues between vandalism and trespass and, you know, trying to move people along or kids along at certain hours and out of the pool area. And after a discussion with the fire chief and the police chief and the DPW director, we feel that it would be in our best interest to close from dusk till dawn at Island Grove. This would allow them to just make sure that there's nobody in the area at all. The way it is right now, you're just not allowed to use the pool, but if you go in there and they step out of the pool, they're no longer in any sort of violation. It'd be better to be able to just clear them and clear everybody out of there at night.
What would we do for like events that are held at night in there or that go into the night? I mean, there have been some events here where we do special permit?
Well, the, larger events, we have a, we already set up a, a procedure where they would go to the rec and/or this board for larger events, so I think that we would be able to do that.
Like the Not So Scary Woods, the movie nights.
Well, certainly town sanctioned events we would allow.
Boy's Go Campos. I mean, there's a bunch of things, I'm just saying.
They do class reunions down at the cabin.
Would it be all special permit? I mean, for anyone?
I think they would all have to get permission from the rec department and again, from a certain size over, and I can't believe, I think we established it at 25 or 50, then they also had to come to this board for approval.
The people that are in there that are doing the bad things, so they're not, they're not going to look at the sign and say, oh, I'll go vandalize someplace. But it's going to make, it's going to. I understand, if I, it's taught me if I'm wrong, what you're going to get at is that, well, now just if anybody's in there, we kick them out. Well, you're kicking out the people that used the park for good. But most parks are lost till dawn. Ames Noel is dust till dawn. You're just going to increase calls because now Miss Karen on the street is going to see, I saw somebody walking in the park and now you're going to go, not you, but the police, got to go check it out. So they go in and they say, get out. But it's easier than, but it's easier than going, is it, are they at the pond or they at there? They shouldn't be anywhere.
I mean, we have cameras in there, right?
Yep.
I mean, the cameras are monitored by the police department, correct?
Well, it's pretty difficult for them to monitor, monitor that camera.
I mean, is Holbrook monitoring them?
All right, and what?
I mean, someone's monitoring.
They're monitored at the station.
You know, if we're not dispatching.
There's other activities going on, man.
Where if we could monitor cameras, I mean, I think Park and Rec maybe has monitors on the cam, I mean, someone has access to cameras.
Park and Rec is not going to be monitoring them at night, though, that's the problem when the vandalism's going on.
Someone has to monitor them.
They're not, nobody is sitting and staring at a screen all night long. He's just watching.
I'm saying, I mean, down at dispatch is not cameras there, there's not.
They are, but they're...
There's a screen in the background.
Yeah.
And if you look up, you see what's going on, but then you're back to doing your...
And I'm sure they also, there's cameras that are...
There's like 13 cameras of police.
Throughout the station also, and, we're, you know, and we're seeing this, and again, you know, we're, we're putting cameras in other places too, to try and knock it down.
I guess this is just a different set of things now. I've, I mean, if you're in a central control, if you're in a dispatch, I mean, you can multitask, I mean, we do it at the jail, I don't see any difference here. I mean, it's, we have 600 cameras, I mean, is there 600 cameras in Abington? I mean, there's a camera, how many cameras in Island Grove? Five or six, seven? Okay. I mean, seven cameras on a, on a monitor is not that hard. I mean, you're not staring at it the whole time, but if, I mean, if you can take a glance, you can look, I mean...
And you may glance up and find the picnic tables are already on fire?
Maybe, the picnic tables are chained or roofed, I don't know, you know? So...
Okay, so what do you want to do?
Is this even us or Park and Rec that sets the hours?
No, this is you.
What's Park and Rec's recommendation?
To close.
Close? To close the special permit? Did they vote on that?
Do you know the number of the vote?
I don't know, well, go ahead.
Like...
Somebody in us. Thank you.
I'm Danny Howell in 36 Wilson Place. I live right beside the foot of the bridge, and I've called the police before, like at 2:30 in the morning when there've been kids out there like coyotes howling. And it takes a while to get anything done, but apparently there's an app that goes on their phones. If you ever saw the Christmas, yeah, one of the Christmas events there where Ralph says, "The old man can change a fuse faster than a rabbit going on a date," well, that's how those kids took off. You call the police department, they send out something, the police go out.
They're gone.
Kids are gone, they're down the street. My neighbors called too, when the parking was there, and the booming is going on in the base with their, in their trunks, you can feel the houses vibrate. They may not be able to hear it, but we hear it. And in the park, there are seven cameras. Park and Rec has one, the television down there in the office, and they're in the police station, but yes, you have to look at them. And many times at nighttime, there've been people over there causing all kinds of noise. That's why the abolitionists spoke at the point and why we had band concerts over there, because the sound travels across the water. You can hear it all around. But they can't hear it in the police station because you can't, there's no, no microphones to put it in there. So I would say to do that. Back in the 50s and 60s, there used to be signs up at the foot of the bridge and at the other side of the park that said, "Park closes at 9 o'clock." So there's something to enforce, but you have to enforce it. That's been the problem, enforcement. There were signs up there for know this, know that. When the lifeguards aren't there, you're trespassing. You have to enforce it. The same way with no smoking, no dogs off the leashes, you have to enforce it.
Are we, are we closing the bridge as well?
I guess that would be the axis.
I mean, if we're closing the park, we should close the bridge, I mean, that's kind of...
Ames Knoll is closed, dusted on.
You're going to have someone, yeah, I mean, you're going to have someone sit there and as soon as they walk up the stairs from the other side of the bridge, you're going to yell at them, "Stop," and then call the cops.
We're not going to have anyone sit there.
But, but you know what I'm saying, like, yeah, I mean, we'd have to close the bridge, and would it be a gate we'd be putting across there, or are we just putting signs up?
It's not too bad if people know how to keep their mouths down, but there are times when they, some of them come in with their portable wifi amplifiers on wheels, and they've had them on the bridge before too.
Yeah.
And this is after all.
I'd say that's just as much of a nuisance, right?
Yes, and last night at 11:30, a motorcycle was at the foot of the bridge revving it up, and the lights were shining right down my driveway, so my bedroom's lit up, the camera comes on, and then they go making the noise down the street. And there's a white Honda with a, one of those things in the back that likes to do a similar thing, make the noise around there, go down Washington Street and go by the police station with his noisy muffler.
Do we have all parks in town closed, dusted on?
No, the recommendation was only for this.
But I mean, should we, should we be...
But Ames Knoll is, as Mike was saying before, it is dawn to dusk.
So should we be making every park, I mean, putting signs at every park?
I, I asked, and the chiefs, the two chiefs and DPW director were with me, and the decision was that it was most important to do Island Grove. Was no issue at this time with the other parks.
That's good to know.
Over in Park Ave, they do have a sign on the south side of the park that says, "No parking after 1:30," but it shouldn't be 1:30, it should be earlier. They never put a sign up where the parking was on Lake Street. Had they done that, then there would have been a little bit more chance of enforcing it. As it is now, people come in and park, now they're parked between the poles, on the opposite direction. Also on Wilson Place, it's a narrow street, there's only parking on one side, and there's one sign that says, "No parking." I had put no parking signs up on either side of the driveway because people were parking right into the driveway. And also parking from the fire hydrant, so I put tape out on the curb to indicate 10 feet either side of it, because people park the wrong direction on the street, so you can't see the no parking sign.
I mean, I...
But it needs to be enforced too.
I mean, I would be looking at doing it across the board, every park if we're going to do it. I mean, I don't think we just pick one, I think if it goes across for every park, put signage up at every park and we close every park dusted on.
Is that your motion?
Yes, that'll be my motion.
I think that's just going to add a crazy amount of nuisance calls.
I agree.
And not keep the people out there, you're intending to keep out.
Well, I think we should go with the recommendation of the police, fire, and DPW director. Yes, chief?
I'm trying to document this meeting.
Yes, you are.
I thought this was going to be a fun night. I just want to preface this, I don't like closing any parks at night because it just, you know, from the actions of a few people. I really don't like that. However, I do agree with the police, they're having all these issues. Personally, I have been to a drowning at the pool after hours at that park. And that's the main reason, I'm personally just limiting this to Island Grove mainly because of the water hazard, as well as we're having some fires there as well, that we're actually finding out about it after the fact sometimes. We don't always get reported on the fires until later on, so. As for trying to monitor cameras, I don't know, I think that may enter the town into some severe liability if anything happens. The cameras, I think now, are there to kind of, you know, you can almost scroll back or whatever, but I don't know if that's, you may be entering into liability if, if something goes on, why didn't you catch that? It's the camera.
Do we have motion lights or anything there? I mean, it sounds like the, the pool is the, the main issue here. I mean, do we have motion lights around it? Do we have any sort of fencing?
Well, no, there's issues on the bridge as well.
There's no motion lights there.
Yeah. I mean, that would be another great thing to add, is a motion light comes on, and, I mean, if, if they're somewhat semi-monitoring cameras, I mean, that's a night and day, that pops right on.
Even then, I think the drowning we had back then, I think that was still in daylight.
Was it?
Just unfortunate, but...
I'd just like, so say we...
You said that was during daylight?
I think it was still light enough, I don't think it was...
But was the pool closed?
I personally don't necessarily think you need to close all of the parks, maybe if you start with this one, you know, but if we start closing, Green Street gets a lot of activity, I think Arnold Park, it's, you know, unless there's complaints or something changes, I...
And I agree, but the problem is, I don't want to close any of them, but now we close Island Grove and now...
Well, due to the hazards of a specific island grove.
Next week, we'll have Green Street again, the following week we'll have Arnold Park, and then the next week...
I feel, I feel bad for the guy that works 12 to 8 and comes home and wants to take his dog for a walk through the Island Grove, because he still likes it 9, 10 o'clock at night, even though it's dark out. That's the, that's the guy that's not going to do it because they're closed. The kids that are going in there and drinking are going in there and letting picnic chips on fire, whatever.
I mean, I think that's more of just...
A sign that says they're closed, not to stop.
Well, the, the point is, the sign at that point, now they're trespassing. So they're not, up until that point, if they're not in the pool, they're not trespassing.
But, so now we're going to have to go respond to the guy who's walking through.
Which is the same thing for the person, the resident walking through there, they're trespassing now too.
Because it's closed, correct.
So if we're doing one for this person, we have to do it for all. I mean, that's, it's just an added, it's added calls, I don't know.
And the chief is right on saying there's a, the liability on the town here if anything happens on that property.
I think liability's on the town regardless.
Well, he was talking about the cameras.
Yeah, I mean, I get, yeah, I get that, I mean, we have cameras there, so it's, it's no difference if they're...
Yeah, cameras are there.
We'd be happy to...
Okay, so there, there is a motion on the floor.
What's the motion?
So I'm going to, taking my motion back.
You can't?
You can't take my motion.
There was no second. Is there a motion on this subject, or do you want to bring the police chief and DPW in? Park and Rec?
I would send this back to Park and Rec and then have them look at it further, send them to go...
And do what with it, when they look at it further when they already decided they want to close?
I mean, they decided they want an Island Grove, I mean, I think they, did Park and Rec look at all parks, or they look at just Island Grove?
No.
If that's the case, then okay, then don't send it back, I guess.
We'll do what you'd like. Would you like it to go back to Park and Rec and discuss all the parks?
Well, I mean, if, if you're...
And we're also... I think that will delay the issue.
If you're saying Park and Rec has already looked at this, then no, I guess there's no need to send it back to Park and Rec. We're here tonight.
If we send it back, then our next meeting isn't until, what, in July?
Yep.
And then...
They can't make that one, let's say, so now you're talking August and the summer's over.
August, and now summer's over.
Do we have any...
So would someone like to make a motion?
Do we have any staffs from the police chief?
Or do you want to pass over this?
How many calls are in Island Grove?
Well, I think he's asking for it, so I would imagine that there's enough issue there for him to be asking.
He brought it up.
The, the police chief brought it up, so. I tend to go with professionals.
I'll make a motion that... We'll start with this one. I'll make a motion that we close all parks in the town of Abington from dusk, dust till dawn.
Is there a second? Tim, second for discussion?
No, we discussed.
So no second?
No second, is there another motion?
So I'll make a motion that we close Island Grove from dusk till dawn.
Is there a second on that?
I'll second that.
Is there any more discussion?
All I'm going to say is if, if the police chief and the fire chief and the important people in town are asking for this...
Is it offensive to that?
Are we imploding?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Still like to see statistics on that though.
We'll, we'll get that for you.
I mean, we have hundreds of calls and we're walked down at Island Grove or...
Okay, discussion on Selectmen Handbook requiring registered voters. Scott, you want to tell us why that's on here?
So, yeah, after we had made some of the changes, we did ask town council to opine, specifically on, on that one, I think some of the other ones, we said, we kind of knew we wanted charter review and or bylaw review to look at. This one, town council suggests it, or he suggests, he said, he specifically says that it has to be done either through a bylaw or through the charter. It's not something that can be done just as a policy in the Selectmen policy, so my recommendation would be is we just forward it along to charter review and or bylaw review.
Was that before or after I asked the last, last meeting if we had talked to town council about it?
It was after.
We got the answer after.
And I was told, yes.
I, and I did not lie, we did ask town council to look at this.
And you said they had no problem with it.
I never said that. Look at the minutes.
So, so do we need a motion to, well, I think the motion should be to remove that from the Selectmen policy.
Yeah, I think, you know, the, the action that you took actually has no effect because it couldn't be taken.
Legally in this, so there's no action needed.
I, I think unless, you know...
Maybe if you're looking for a recommendation to send it to, to charter review is part of our recommendations that we already sent over.
Yeah.
So no action needed?
Nope, I think we're good. And we, we actually didn't, I don't think we identified or followed up on it.
Vote to allow harbor to the Bay bicycle charity ride through Abington. There's nobody here for that to act.
Are we doing only a couple of things tonight or...
Yes, but he's going to...
He's patiently waiting.
He's, he's waiting.
Just make sure I didn't miss something.
So I think we just need a motion to allow them to ride through Abington, they've done this before.
Yeah.
Need any police details or anything like that?
They'll, yeah, they'll work, I'll ask them to, you know, review it with fire chief, police chief, DPW, make sure anything that we need to do, but it sounds like that this is something that's been, I know they went through Whitman too, and it's just kind of a status quo.
Okay. I'll make a motion to allow the harbor to the Bay bicycle charity ride through Abington.
Is there a second? Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. I guess we might as well do Steve Wright now.
Since that's all that's left, come on up.
Discussion with Steve Wright, San Boron Head Landfill Consultant.
Do you want to use my laptop? Do you want to...
Whatever you think is the easiest. I can use yours.
Steve, how many years you been working on this, the town?
I've been with the town since 2005. So I'm going to show some pictures of me back then, and my hair was still as thin as a mouse.
And I was thinner then too.
Yeah.
Get this wig around me. Your hair's been slapped on for this. It's starting. Hold on. It's just getting good. So you, you sent me... No, I have it on this, don't tell, tell me you don't have a...
It's a MacBook.
Oh.
Plenty of fish, what's that?
So that means I should set it up on mine.
Yep. Everybody take five, get yourself a glass of water.
I'll let you in, we usually have passwords. But I'm sure we... Can I be able to plug this in, somebody's close by? I hope so.
Are you even able to plug this in?
I do have each thing, I got each thing on, no, I got a pool on the inside. This would be a problem. Maybe I don't have any dabbler. I, I, yeah, that's the thing. I got each thing on either, I'm down there. I know, I should have...
Put a key in there. I didn't catch on. Did she? Hey, how can you do that? We don't afford it.
You can try, you can try.
If we had a new fire station, we could have a dock, man.
We'd have a kennel on the back, oh, yeah.
Only other thing I could suggest then is email me the slides, or I have the ones that say...
I can...
Email me the PowerPoint and we'll go back to that.
If I can get Wi-Fi on here now.
We know the password now.
That's the password, it's Skynet.
This is working seriously. Let's see.
That's okay.
Well, yeah, I was just looking at where we are in the process, what's going on out there, what are some options?
Believe it or not, it's actually pretty interesting. I will say that PowerPoint on the mat, like a little, little pain, but we gotta do what we gotta do.
It's too bad I had to go through this. Slick.
There's on the town near just the door, one we're sitting on.
The other one, the other one who said five-minute break time. Wasn't a cable, which is a little lacking anyway, just like you said. What?
Twenty-four, twenty-five, whatever that, Monday, this Monday?
Oh, July. Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna be on the vineyard.
Oh, that's-
Yeah, I just wanna go to the-
The rock house?
Hope we got staying in our place.
I, I, I lost the download.
What?
Oh, just a fix down and I find my food.
Is that the scene of this family?
Are you? For what? You're going? You're taking the misses with them? The behavior's still live, huh?
James just asked why we're just sitting here. He's watching us, my son.
Yeah, really. Why is he watching?
Did you take away his Playstation or something? What's that?
They have a clicker. They can change the camera.
Probably stuck between the cushions.
I'll walk in, my kids will be watching the video, like, cross the road again, Benji.
Read off Scott's emails.
This isn't the burner account, it's fine. We're live. Yeah, all right.
Okay, so, can we have this closed?
Anybody know what happened to Alexander?
There's no tax, there's no sale, right there. Almost out of here, something a little bit wrong.
Just do a little test there.
Might as well work out.
Ten minute break.
These guys needed a break.
There's eleven weeks to go. Okay, Steve, introduce yourself, please.
Steve Wright with San Born Head, um, principal engineer, DP at San Born Head. And, um, as Alex had asked, how long have I been, like, working on the landfill? Uh, it goes back to two thousand and five, and it was pretty, I guess, pretty active back in those first, two thousand and five to, I guess you could say up to two thousand and fourteen. And I'm aware, obviously through Scott, of what, uh, the potential for putting an RFP out on the street to see if you can basically get, um, get the site capped with really little cost to the town. So Scott asked me to take a look at that draft RFP, and looking at anything like that, it's like, well, I think for the selectmen, it should be cast in the light of where have we been, what's out there, where are you with DEP right now, as quiet as it has been. And it's intentionally, I think it's to some degree with the town, feel like if the DEP has this in their court, let's just wait till they get it out of their court. And that's why it's been really pretty quiet. And when I go through this, you'll find, like, from two thousand and fourteen, things have really quieted down, and we're just doing compliance monitoring. So, um, let me give you the agenda, and I apologize, this is a little bit like a drink from a fire hose. But I did it so that when you have your handouts, you have cheat sheets when I'm gone to kind of look at, well, what did he say anyway? What is this all about? So the items I want to talk to is an existing administrative consent order that negotiations began for the landfill back in two thousand and five, and this would kick things off with DEP and obligations relative to the site. And then that, shortly following the start of those ACO negotiations, we started looking at conceptual closure alternatives, of which contaminated soils to defray the cost of closure was looked at at that time. And that was because there was a lot of pressure on the town from DEP to get ready to cap. And it was happening very quickly, faster than you really could get through the assessment enclosure process. So the town's like, if this is coming at us this fast, we need to figure out a way to be able to fund it. And so the contaminated soils and the DEP has a policy about that was an obvious alternative to look at. So I'm gonna present, I'm gonna walk you back to the, the meetings we had, public meetings we had back in two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, that looked at those, um, alternatives. And then what is the landfill assessment enclosure process? Because that was a big chunk, that was what the ACO was all about. You gotta assess the landfill, you gotta close the landfill. And then with that is the context in the background. So how does that inform the, the draft RFP and where the town might want to go? So that's the agenda, and I will move you through this as, as quickly as I can. And push me along if I'm not moving fast enough. So what prompted the ACO? Uh, there is the, you guys are all familiar with the Cape Cod lumber side of the site, which was the old T2, I think, and Newcombe property, uh, which was a large property. But then there was also small development on the other eastern side of the site, which was at the time Northeast Module Homes. And one of the lots that was closest to the landfill was undeveloped. And the owner at the time wanted to develop that lot, and he had surveyors come out to the site, and the surveyors are looking at the site, and they're like, eh, looks like you got an issue here with the landfill coming onto your property. Then owner called the DEP, DEP comes out, and they say, yeah, you got an issue here, the landfill. And we didn't even know much about what was going on. This landfill's been off our radar screen, because it hadn't been active since nineteen seventy-five. So, you know, we're talking thirty years later, DEP comes out and they say, ah, we gotta, and they had a number of meetings with the town. Then I got involved with my former company, which was SEA. So that started the ACO process and negotiations, which evolved over a good chunk of time. But the, the, the site visit, there were two primary violations that they were citing the town in. And it was failure to cap and unline landfill, and you had an unpermitted postclosure use, which is the front part of the site where you got the composting going on. And there was some small-scale recycling activities. So DEP's like, you gotta address those, we gotta deal with it through the ACO. Now, the ACO wasn't finalized until two thousand and ten, and in large part, what added to that, there was the normal negotiations that go on between town and DEP. Uh, there were some funding considerations and funding cycles that had a factor into this. But it was largely because, uh, there wasn't just an issue on the eastern small parcel of land, but there was an issue over on the old T2 Gulf Driving Range, and it was a much bigger encroachment on that side. And it took time to negotiate rights of entry and be able to get onto the property. So long and short, it took, it took to two thousand and ten to get the ACO finalized. And now the requirements of the ACO, you gotta complete a landfill assessment, uh, process, you gotta prepare a corrective action design, which is what they call it. A lot of times it basically means you gotta cap it, you gotta do a design to cap the landfill. Uh, and then you gotta implement it, you gotta construct it. And then the, so as terms of compliance status right now, the ACO only had one date that is fixed calendar date in it. And it was, the submittal was called a comprehensive site assessment report. So it's one of the biggest pieces of the assessment process, one of the most costly pieces. And that had to be submitted, well, it was submitted in two thousand and fourteen. Other than that, the ball is in DEP's court because all of the timelines in the ACO is we will, DEP, the town will do something within so many days of DEP reviewing and approving of something. Well, they've had the CSA, they haven't done anything with it. So it's, that's why the ACO, it's active, but it's no trigger right now. It's just kind of like dormant. So. Now, what the site looks like and what are the issues at the site? So north is pointing, obviously you can see it's to the left-hand side, and, uh, here's what we got. That's our site currently, the, the property limits, tw- about twenty-one acres. Uh, these colors don't show very well here. It's not a good contrast. But you might sort of see, and maybe your handouts are better, where our landfill is, the delineated limits, that's part of the CSA activities, test pitting out there. It's a eleven and a half acres, I call it about twelve, rounding it off. And that's the encroachment on the former Northeast modular homes property. And the town acquired that property in two thousand and eleven. It was about a third of an acre that went onto his property of a one-acre parcel. The bigger parcel was, was the, like I say, the old Newcombe parcel. And as part of Cape Cod lumber acquiring the part, the property, Newcombe had an agreement with the town that says, if I can sell this property, I'll make sure that the chunk of the landfill that's on my property gets turned over to the town. And it was all wrapped into the Cape Cod lumber transaction, so they weren't buying that headache. And that was about a five-acre, um, acquisition or turnover to the town, and that was in two thousand and twelve. So town owns all those parcels now, and I think, I don't know what else turned on there. I think that the gray area where the composting is turned on, that's what that was. Which we had to do some, ambient air monitoring in that area. That whitish highlight along the perimeter is, um, the results of test pits, to the extent we could do them, is in wetland area. And that's what we're estimating as wetland encroachment. That's one point six acres. That's a fair amount of wetland encroachment. But it's, it's also estimated to be conservative, and that's probably one of the bigger issues when the time comes to have to deal with the, the closure of the landfill. Because environmentally, the landfill is not really indicating much impact. So, uh, now, what did we do for conceptual closure alternatives? Again, the ACO was issued in, uh, not issued, but the drafts began in two thousand and five, back and forth, pressure, you gotta close. Town's like, all right, what are we gonna do? Let's look at alternatives. And it was looking at several alternatives that had postclosure use, um, no postclosure use, let's import some soil, let's not import any soil. But the big driver was, what can we get for revenue out of the soil? How can we compare this to other alternatives if we don't import the soil? And get a feel for a comparison of costs and how we should proceed. Now, MassDEP has a policy for importing contaminated soils at unlined landfill sites. And so when we were looking at alternatives for the town, we were trying to do it under the guise of that, of that, of the premise of that policy. And, um, they, it does allow you to bring in different types of materials. It's not just contaminated soils. It allows you to bring in C and D residuals, that's another material you can bring in, street sweepings, catchbasin cleanings. But most often what you see communities taking in are soils, and there's such a demand to, you know, find a home for impacted soils now. So anyway, that was, well, I'll speak to that, but that was the premise for what was presented. We, the town would, would bring in soils, not any other type of material, but it was gonna be soils. And then ACOs as part of the DEP policy, it's, it's an administrative consent order that the DEP uses to memorialize the agreement between the town and DEP of how you're gonna bring that material in, in a timeline. And since you already have an ACO, if you go this path, the assumption would be that they'd modify the ACO to fold this into it. I suppose it's possible that they could say, oh, let's close the old ACO and do a new one. I'm not sure they would do that. And another big part, I just clicked ahead, but another big part of the guidance, uh, policy from MassDEP is to have a public comment period, to allow the public to, to weigh in and present this to the, to the public so that they can weigh in on what they think of postclosure uses, the material that's coming in, how it's gonna come in, what it means to them, particularly people that are close to the site. So the alternatives that were evaluated and an alternative that was selected, so we had three meetings. Back in two thousand and six, we had two, uh, in September and December, and then we had a closing meeting, and they were joint meetings, Board of Health, Board of Selectmen. The closing one and the final decision on what to, to, to do as a preferred option was January eighth in two thousand and seven. And we looked at nine options, uh, and they were, you know, fifty thousand foot level to get an idea of how they each compared. So, uh, this is in, in a, in a box or a matrix format. We looked at them in the context of what if you maximize the amount of soil you could bring into the site versus an intermediate amount of soil versus no soil import? And, and then, um, compared, as part of the matrix, you'd say, well, for those three alternatives, what if you had no postclosure use, you had a partial postclosure use, or you had a full postclosure use? And there's your nine options, and graphically, um, they fill in like this. And this is exactly the graphic with the numbers that was presented back in two thousand and six, two thousand and seven. And the numbers, I was mentioning to Scott, the numbers were conservative at the time, and I think for closure costs are still pretty good. Because at the time, not as high as it is now, but we were going through a spike in fuel costs back at that time, and I was trying to account for it. And I was jumping up numbers around that time. So as much as I'd say, eh, don't, don't go with these numbers, they're not bad numbers for, like, capping costs. So you can see, we got ball fields, we, and this was all part of the town saying, well, let's just throw some different things out there. But the alternatives that are importing soil are, um, like maximizing a soil importer, like one, two, and three. And that was a, you know, you're looking at about, in alternative one, it was over a hundred and fifty thousand cubic yards. And then the intermediate import was like eighty-five thousand cubic yards, so that's like four, five, and six. And then seven, eight, nine was no import. So we presented those alternatives. If you look at alternative number three, because that's the one that was selected, there was maximizing the fill in the back part of the site with, with soil. And I'll just flip to that so you can see it a little bit better. Maximizing soil in the back part of the site, no real soil import in the front part of the site, reserve that for a compo, continued composting and some recycling activities. And this is just, again, conceptual. There's nothing really vetted in that concept other than we're gonna have a pavement area in the front part of the site. That front part of the site is about four acres, the back part of the site is about eight acres. And that big brown area there, at the time this was done, we hadn't done the test pitting on the Newcombe property. So we didn't really, I could tell walking the site what it looked like, the limits of the landfill were. And we were trying to be conservative here and saying, don't assume you can pull the landfill out into that brown area because it looks like that's clean, but we haven't done test pits yet. And for the most part, it was, it is clean. That area there doesn't have anything in it. So these estimates of a hundred and fifty thousand cubic yards, you can see in the profile, it's a pretty significant raise in grade on the back part of the site. And the only reason you see a raise in the grade in the front part of the site, it's part of the regrading of the front part using existing material. So that's option three, and it was option three that was voted on and, and, um, in the record, if you will, between that joint meeting, Board of Selectmen, Board of Health, and we'd have the public here, and we spoke about how the materi, the concept of how the material would be imported. And then the town manager advised DEP, hey, we have this in-concept approach that we're gonna move forward with. And so we had that kind of resolved as a direction. The only thing that wasn't resolved at the time is we couldn't do anything because we didn't have the property. So it's like, well, when we get that resolved. So that's what we looked at back in the day on the alternatives. Now landfill assessment enclosure, so what's that all about? So the landfill assessment enclosure process is a multi-stepped, uh, regulated process with DEP where you can't move to the next step until the DEP approves of the prior step and the scoping that you do in that prior step for the next step. So it begins with an initial site assessment, and we did that, and, and a big part of that was test pitting to find out where is the limit of waste. That was submitted in September of two thousand and eight. It was approved by DEP shortly thereafter, December two thousand and eight. It approved our scope for the comprehensive site assessment field investigations and report, which, like I said, is the, probably the most costly part of the assessment process because you're gathering all this environmental data, putting in wells, landfill gas sampling, surface water sampling, groundwater sampling, uh, and then evaluating it. So we submitted that in two thousand and fourteen. And again, that was the deadline or the date in, in the ACO. We asked for extension, but that, and DEP granted us that. And now it's just been sitting there, and they haven't acted on it. And I've met with the board in two thousand and twelve as we were doing the CSA, two thousand and fourteen, after we submitted the CSA, with the idea like, okay, now we gotta get ready because they're gonna act on this. And they didn't act on it. And then I had some conversations with, with Rick- And then I had some conversations with Rick over following, maybe even years. Let's not push this, there's no reason to push it. When they get around to it, they'll get around. You guys had other costs that you had to deal with, big projects, the school, things like that. So, all right, so we just let it lie. And yet, there are other steps in the process. So, if the DEP came back and said, hey, here's your approved CSA, and the CSA has the shell of a scope of work for the next step, which is an alternatives analysis. The alternatives analysis can look at all those alternatives that I just presented, that we looked at back in 2006, or something different. And they were sort of shelled out around that concept of not that many alternatives, but solar was another thing. We just, you're just putting placeholders there. And then, if the, when the DEP comes back and approves our CSA, we'd come back to the town and say, okay, what do we wanna really look at for alternatives? How many of these do you guys think are still valid, if any of them? So, and I know one of them, I think, that the board was, always thought was the most valid, which was the no-action alternative, which we're allowed to look at. So, that gets into, but let me talk, so then, there's the CAAA, and then when you select a preferred alternative, you submit, you know, you have a report that goes into DEP, and if the DEP approves of what you're proposing, that's your approval to do a corrective action design, which is generally your cap design. And that's a corrective action design, you get that approved, and then you can go off to construction. And that's the traditional assessment enclosure process. So, we're back at the CSA phase. But again, a lot of cost in this process, certainly between ISA, CSA, and CAAA, the biggest nut in that was the CSA, the town's past that. So, I'm sorry. So, now, the CSA findings. Groundwater, and I bolded it here, minimal impact on groundwater. Surface water, some impact on stream surface water, where the impact may be elevated further from the landfill. And the monitoring we've done since then, it kind of dances around, but it's still not, like alarming. Yeah, so, some impact. Stream sediment, so that's the stream that, there's a stream that crosses through the midsection of the landfill that divides the front from the back. Again, some impact there from an eco risk perspective, and those standards are very low. But still, nothing alarming. Wetland soil, we had to do some soil sampling from Frag Mighty in the extended area that I showed you, the white zones around the landfill. And there was some metals hit, but not, again, not alarming, not, no sort of smoking anything. So, and landfill gas, we have to look at landfill gas for off-site migration, and since you're surrounded by wetlands, there's no real migration, the water binds it, keeps it confined. The landfill doesn't generate a lot of gas, the back part has some gas that it generates, and we look in one corner of the site, which you'll see here. So, here's our monitoring network, it's a small network. We've got four wells that ring around the landfill. Here's where the sediment and surface water collection points were in the stream that crosses the landfill. And let's see if I can see this. And then, the GMWs, that's gas monitoring well one and two, which were installed within the landfill. And then this blow-up here is just gas wells, perimeter wells that were put down in that corner of the site, because that, if there was off-site migration, that's where there's receptor, potential receptors. And we don't have gas hits. We have gas in the back part of the landfill, but it just tells us that the landfill is generating gas. If there was a post-closure use back there, it might be helpful to know that, but it's not problematic. So, the CSA recommendations, what did we recommend? Two major recommendations that came out of it. What is, what should be the environmental monitoring program with the CSA being done? And essentially, that's what we're doing right now. It's this routine monitoring at the landfill that we've been doing, groundwater and surface water and sediment and landfill gas. And then, we had these suggested corrective action alternatives to be evaluated during the CAAA phase. So, I mentioned we're doing the ongoing monitoring, and we've been doing it since 2014. Corrective action alternative analysis, the concepts that were presented. So, because the landfill last operated in 1975, the potential that you could maybe get a grandfather to standards at that time, which would be like two foot of soil cover, no plastic cap, it's a possibility. So, it's an alternative that we speak to. And if you wanted to do compost operations in the front part of the site, you know, maybe just pave it or dense grade it. And you're not doing anything overly like landfill capping oriented, you're just trying to put a barrier layer in there and improve it and minimize access to the waste material and make it more maintainable, so there's not, it's not all overgrown. That's the grandfathered part, the first bullet point there, in the absence of an approved cap, but you don't have an approved cap. The high-end alternative is capping to the standards that exist today, which is a drainage material, a topsoil material, you got a bedding material, and you have a geomembrane. So, that's the most costly alternative. And then, we have a no-action alternative. So, these are what are allowed under the regs. Do a standard, do a no-action, do a standard, and then you can look at an alternative. So, those are the three basic. And then, we took the presentation that we had back in 2006, 2007, what the town voted on, and we weaved in concepts for bringing in impacted soils. And we were just reminding DEP, hey, the town voted on this, and we wanna keep it in front of you. So, and I, so the third bullet here says weave in a no-action alternative for the wetlands. Because the wetlands really does complicate things for us, if we have to cap and deal with those. It's just the quantity of wetland impact, it has a certain permitting requirement to it that I won't bore you with, but it gets involved. So, I mean, if you think, what keeps it not so involved? If you have less than 5,000 square feet of wetland impact. And we have 60,000 based upon these estimates, so keep that in mind. And I think that it's, you could advocate that you not have to deal with that. Now, this is definitely a drink from a fire hose, and it's also hard to see. But if you look at item four here, and if you look at your handout, this has the 150,000 cubic yards. This is the option that was voted on and improved in concept to say, 150,000 yards of contaminated soil in the back part of the site, and then we're gonna do a post-closure use in the front part of the site. That's, I think that's the alternative that I wanted to point out to you. But there is a no-action alternative here. What if we don't do anything, and we justify that based upon, is there really enough impact out here? Could we actually, or do a minimal corrective action? So, these are, these are the alternatives that are in concept in front of DEP as part of the CSA report, shelling out the next step, the alternatives analysis. So, now, here we are, considerations for going forward. The draft RFP, which you guys probably know, the items that are included in there, the requested services, closure design, community outreach, construction and construction observation, continued composting and recycling drop-off during the project, and completion of upgrades to the composting recycling area upon completion of the closure. So, if this is turnkey, the idea is, I guess, at the end of the project, not only will you have it all capped, which you'll have a nice area out in the front for people to do drop-off, all baked into the turnkey nature of this. So, now, considerations regarding the draft. So, that draft RFP operates in a little bit of different manner than what was anticipated or thought about back in 2006, 2007. And that's okay. But just so you know, back in the day, the idea was, the town will bid, and you could do it one of two ways, but you could bid out the soils importation to a contractor. You put a set of bid documents together, put it on the street, a contractor bids on it, and it may be the same contractor that would cap the landfill. He operates it for you, and he's bringing in dirt, and he's placing the dirt in accordance with design plans and controls, including making sure the soil packages are okay and all that, which is, if you've got contaminated soils, there's a whole procedure related to that. And so, you've got your controls on that, and that's one contractor, and it could be the same contractor, that's your revenue stage, and you're bringing revenue in as the dirt's coming in. And it could be the same contractor that then flips and caps the site. But that he had to bid that and win that work, and that the town would be paying that. So, the town's still staying in that kind of role as managing through the engineer that process. The draft RFP is not unusual, you know, there are other ones that are like this that are out on the street, just turnkey it and turn it over. So, a couple of points to keep in mind, though, with the idea of the town bidding it through, you know, engineering, doing engineering design and then bidding at 3039M, is that the landfill does have peat underneath it, and peat is compressible. Now, some of that's gonna have been compressed because of some of the waste material that's out there. But generally, on these dirt fill sites, airspace, when you turn, when you turnkey it, you don't really own the airspace anymore, because the contractor's coming in and he's like, I'm making my assumptions on, hey, this is what I got for existing conditions on the surface, and I'm filling to here, and this is my airspace, and I gotta get enough dirt, I gotta get enough airspace to be able to offset my costs for capping this thing. Now, if you have compressible material, whether it's the waste mass itself, which it would be, and maybe underlying peat material, that top surface, when he starts loading it, is going down. So, the airspace is increasing because you're surcharging it. And there is revenue there. And boy, it can be a great pickup. It's like, wow, we estimated this thing on so many yards, 100, let's just call it 150,000 yards. And we figured it was gonna take this amount of time to bring in that amount of material. But the landfill's just, it's compressing, and we're able to bring in, I don't know, 30% more, let's just say. The only thing you might see as a result of that is, and it's taken longer to kind of reach the grades, but that airspace potentially is owned by the contractor, so that's great for him. And you can work that through to your interest too, as long as you're aware of it, at least I think you can. But under the original concept, you would have owned the airspace. So, if you found that to be the case, it's like, jeez, we're bringing in more, that money's going straight to us. The only thing that's sliced off the top is the cost to pay the contractor to scale it, like he's gonna put a scale out there, so you gotta pay him to do that, and you gotta pay him to place it. So, there's costs there. And I can tell you, on a landfill project recently, we had, on average, and it was a good-sized soils project, maybe it was about $17 a ton on average, and you get these variabilities on it, depending upon what was happening in the marketplace, and what was going on near Boston and how limited disposal was near Boston, because this wasn't right near Boston. So, about, you know, it was around $17 a ton, and it was maybe $5 a ton to manage it, to scale it and place it. And those are much better numbers than what we were thinking of in 2007. We were going off at $10 a yard, and those numbers that I just said to you net are probably about $20 a yard. So, if your closure costs don't change too much and your revenue's coming, that's great. And if you're getting more airspace because it's compressing, that's even better. It's like, oh my God, we might actually be able to build a baseball field too, you know, it's like. So, that's an important thing to think about, though. The settlement issue is a value to the town, to keep in mind. So, getting back to some considerations here, because I just went through the first three small bullets, indented bullets there, I think. The potential for a no-action alternative at the site, this is an option that was intended to be explored with Mass DEP as part of the CAAA. If composting and recycling is to continue in the front part of the site, some form of cap is expected to be required. So, if we were able to convince DEP to do, keep the contaminated soils, now put that to the back and say, look, how can we keep the cost down as much as possible? Can we get away with a no-action alternative or a minimal, make it maintainable in the back? So, we're gonna clear cut, and we're gonna put some soil down, we're gonna do some minimal stuff in the back to make it more manageable, mow it, whatever, and keep those costs down. But if we wanna do something in the front part of the site, it's to be expected that the DEP's gonna say, you gotta do some form of protection if you're gonna be digging around or moving around on the front there. So, generally, a post-closure use is gonna mean, you're not gonna get away with a no-action if you've got some sort of post-closure connected to it. So, what are some other thoughts on this? So, now, this is more directed towards the draft RFP. There's a concept sketch that shows net fill of 163,000 cubic yards of material. And there's a couple of things that are of interest to me in that. It seems to account, and I think properly and conservatively, from not filling in the wetlands. They're not going to the same elevation that conceptually we looked at back in 2007. We were maxing out at, going by elevation, 195, and their proposal is 180. Now, ours, we were comparing alternatives, so it was really mostly to compare A to B to C to D, or one, two, three, four. It wasn't drilling down and saying, all right, how are our contours all working? We were just maximizing. And when you get into it, you know, you're probably gonna lose some, you're gonna lose something, tying into the edges or whatever. So, their alternative has a total of 163,000, but they're also filling in the front part of the site. And that had some three-to-one grades in it. So, and again, they're probably, you know, just conceptually looking at things, but that may not work great in concert with composting. You know, you have this hill in there, it's like, how are you composting on the hill? And if you lost volume in the front part of the site, because it's like, well, we wanna do composting here, so we gotta flatten that out, how much volume do you end up losing? Or would the contractor end up potentially losing and start to feel maybe differently about it? And maybe he'd be okay. But that's something to keep in mind. I think his numbers also account for, he's got a gross fill number, I think, I'm not positive, but he also might be accounting for reducing because some of his final grades are assuming that those are capping grades. So, you gotta strip off imported clean soils to do that. But that's his working numbers, best I understand it, 163. So, it's pretty close to the 150 we had, it's just he's getting it from the front as well. So, let me just catch myself up on some of these bullets here. So, would the material be contaminated soil or rather grading and shaping materials? So, that's a question. I think it's contaminated soils, but I'm not positive that that would be the entirety of it, because the material, different types of material have different things you gotta think about. DEP has different issues with different types of material. I already mentioned the filling shown in the front part of the site that would bound that area, that could conflict with post-closure use in the front area. Filling is shown in an area about a half an acre. And I showed you that brown area on the Old Newcombe property that I said, this is kind of, it's not waste, it was confirmed with the test pitting. Some of the concept grading is slicing through that, and it's extending the landfill footprint by about a half an acre, which generally, the DEP's like, you can't enlarge your footprint. So, I don't know how problematic that would be. Because it may not sound like much, but you've got this long spine, and if you can get your grading by taking advantage of a smooth sweeping out, if you lose that, it can have a decent effect on your volume. So, these were issues because these drawings are very similar to what we saw, I think they're the same ones, that we saw back in 2017. And we commented on these, and it seemed at the time that that was sort of, ugh, that's not that great. Mostly the issue of that half acre. And I think it caused a sort of backing away. But things must have changed, you know, being the market what it is, it's like, well, maybe that's still, maybe that alternative still works out of the gate. I still think you have those considerations, though, you gotta tackle. So, anyway, that gets me down to, what would the loss of grading and shaping capacity, if there is, which I think there would be, due to the pro forma or the financial analysis that the contractor's done, or any contractor does? What's the minimum volume needed to cover costs of capping and whatever your post-closure use area is and what you want that to be? Settlement considerations, I already mentioned that to you, and how that can be of value to the town if you're aware of it, or potentially could be. Grading and shaping, closure will trigger outreach. So, here's what brings us to, what does this mean to us now? Grading and shaping will trigger outreach to man- and shaping will trigger outreach to Mass DEP. The draft RFP acknowledges all this. It understands this is the process. And it's expected to lead to a modification to the ACO. So, how will Mass DEP close out the CSA, these activities that are already in, it's gonna require action to say, "All right, this is how we're gonna close this out." And how could we best advocate to close certain things out? Can we get away from this wetlands issue? If we could get that off the table, that's a huge, huge thing, off the table. How will Mass DEP close out the CSA? Where would the CAAA fit into the process? Would it be in the process? Does it need to be in the process? And will Mass DEP require the CAAA? What about wetlands encroachment? Sorry, I already mentioned that to you. Let me just see what I have here. I'm not gonna go on that one yet. So, the CAAA, this is, again, the alternatives analysis, and this is where the town could use that step to confirm what it wants to do for post-closure use and how it wants to do it, what it wants the front to look like. And maybe it's no big deal, but, you know, what are the concepts for that? And again, resolving or confirming how much soil you think you'd be bringing in, resolve that you're not, you know, your post-closure use is really not gonna be anything in the back part of the site. So, basically, if you get through the CAAA, you will have gotten through almost all of the assessment process. It would take you right up to the design. And should the town go through that step, next step, would that be in your best interest? If you're gonna go back to DEP and say, "This is something we're interested in doing, we're interested in bringing this material in, and we wanna start talking about that and get feedback from you, Mass DEP," because you're gonna be bringing in theoretically, let's say, it is the contaminated soils, what sort of protections does the town need to be aware of, and should there be more protections that the town should work into an RFP, in the interest of testing requirements for those soils? Now, there are processes for that, that DEP has, testing requirements, but things are changing a little bit with emerging contaminants of PFOS and things like that. And that's not part of the program. And it might be something that you want to certainly be aware of and be proactive with DEP, if you're gonna talk to them and be representative about, you know, how do we protect ourselves against this? Should we be aware of it? Is there an issue here? I strongly think the town needs to, if it's going to go and put an RFP out on the street, before you do anything like that, that means you're ready to engage DEP, because it's gonna take you there. You're gonna have to go there. It's better to go to them before the RFP goes out on the street, get your ducks in a row, and understand what is it that they're asking, because there may be pieces that should go into that RFP to solicit protections for you, or requirements. And that's what this last bullet here says. They've been silent on the CSA and the ACO since 2014, and this will wake them up. There may be advantages to talking to them, because you may be able to advocate better on your own behalf when you're being proactive than waiting to hear from them. So, that could be a benefit to you. But the question is, well, what if we did nothing? Now, this has been the thought. How long do we, how long could we do nothing? When will they get around to us? And you think about it, this is eight years, this is a freaking long time, you know, particularly given how urgent everything was early on. And I can't make any interpretations from it. It's not like, oh, so, I think if the results from the CSA were showing something that was alarming, it'd be different. But I wouldn't go so far as to say they don't care anymore because of the results of the CSA. It's just, they got flooded with a lot of solar projects back around that time, limited staff, and I think they just had to address the urgent needs at the time, and Abington was falling at the back of the pack, and to some degree, surprisingly, because ACOS are generally a high priority. And they're still on the list, you know, they gotta close this out. So, anyway, just to reiterate this, if you meet with them, how does the work fit in with the existing ACO? How can you present your interests, know the items that you'd wanna be able to, if you can get them off the table, get the wetlands issues, agree that based upon the results of the CSA, we have some good findings, and to close, if we could close that out and get positive closeout from Mass DEP, you know that those issues are resolved. So, when you put something out on the street, when the contractor gives you a concept that shows no wetland replication, no wetland restoration, it's because, yeah, we already got the blessing on that. We don't know where we stand with that right now. So, I hit on everything, I think. And you guys-
So, your suggestion is that we talk to, or have someone like you talk to DEP on our behalf?
If we're gonna put in a RFP.
If we're gonna put an RFP, yeah.
Well, you've already, you have already voted and directed me to put an RFP together. The reason I brought Stephen in was because I know you don't all have the same history and background of what's been going on at the landfill, and I thought it was important that you got up to date on it. My thought would be exactly that, those moving forward, we'll work together to go meet with DEP and just continue forward, and, you know, just keep you guys up to date as we hit these milestones, and certainly, if we hit any-
My fear is, you know, I think there's an opportunity now to get the fill at low cost or no cost to the town. 10 years from now, we don't know what's gonna happen. And if DEP all of a sudden tells us 10 years from now, "Okay, now we're looking at it, now close it," and these opportunities aren't out there with the construction that's going on now and everything, I think it could be millions of dollars for the town if we had to cap it.
I hear what you're saying. And I would tell you, that could be the case with respect to the soils disposal, unless there's a real slump, right? If they're still building, if they're still, gotta get rid of impacted soils, and the DEP does nothing to make it easier to get rid of that, and they've tried to, you know, do things with quarries and similar soils, but it's, that's, that's similar soils to, you know, it's not as impacted generally. This is called COM97 soil, so there's a little bit more of a contamination profile to it. It seems, what we've seen so far, from 2006 to today, is less places to get rid of it, because landfills are becoming scarcer and scarcer. This project I just told you about is like, was a major MSW landfill, and it is no more, and it closed out by taking the dirt at the very last leg of its life. And there are other landfills out there where you have contractors that, you know, they see what an advantage is to own, well, not own, but to be able to take material to a site that supports their construction or development arm. And I wanna believe, but I could be wrong, so Alex, you know, that's a safe way to look at it. I could also be convinced to say, what's $20 a cubic yard today, in 10 years, it's gonna be $50 a cubic yard, you know? And the capping costs, are they gonna climb as much? Because they're so driven by fuel. Now, hopefully, gas isn't, you know, I don't know what's gonna happen with the fuel costs. Geo-membrane is a petroleum product, you know, geotextiles are petroleum products, shipping is, you know, it's just, the fuel costs right now, you guys see it, I'm sure, all these cost provisions, you know, to deal with fuel escalators, and, you know, who knows what it'll be like when the DEP does come back. You're right, Alex. So, if you act on the basis that we know that there's a market there now, it's a pretty good market, and we think we can fold in our protections, and we can get the value we want out of this, and there will be some costs, let's say, to the town, but it's marginal compared to the major nut. It's really a question of how you, I think, just how you position yourself for moving forward with that work, and in what timeframe would any contractor be willing to say, "Yeah, I'm really interested in this, and if this thing comes online in the next year," because it even, the results of talking to DEP, you might find yourself, now you've talked to them, that process starts, and my guess is, it's going to be moving again. And if it, and the idea would be, well, if it's moving again, this is the direction we're gonna take it, and that's the direction it's gonna have to go. Because if it doesn't go in that direction, why do we do this? You know? So, it really means that there's not probably a lot of alternatives to look at, because this is what we wanna do, we wanna maximize the soils, it's gonna be in that back part of the site, we wanna do this in the front part of the site, and we may have, what if they adopt a no-action alternative, or some slice of it? It would give you an opportunity to say, "All right, well, what is that value of a no-action alternative, or a partial no-action, where we do have to pay something, but we don't have to bring in dirt," versus bringing in dirt and maybe even paying less, or paying the same amount? And what do we, what do we wanna do? What makes most sense for us? That may be the math exercise that you wanna take a look at, find out, would DEP back off? How far off would they back off? So...
Any questions?
Very informative.
Thank you. I know it's a lot.
So, you two will continue?
Keep it moving forward.
Yeah.
And when we get to the next step, we'll bring it to the board again.
I was on conservation, as you know, when Steve started all this.
Yeah, yeah.
A long time ago, and-
It was Hal, right?
Yeah, Hal, yeah. Me and Hal.
So, maybe another 10 years, another town manager?
Yeah.
What I was thinking, yeah. Wait a minute, I still have to be here, didn't I?
Intended.
Only 55.
Okay, thank you very much. Scott will be in touch with you.
Thank you. Scott, I guess you've got all of that now?
You've got all the secret information.
Yeah.
Okay, Town Manager's Report.
Have we done everything else?
I believe we have.
Nice. All right, so, Leish Shea, who was here earlier, is currently working with several other communities. We're selecting a consultant to work with our towns to update hazard mitigation plans. This work was made possible through an assistance grant from FEMA. It's worth about $70,000. The plan is necessary to be available for other grants, as well as financial assistance, should there be, you know, some sort of weather-related incident. Plan identifies areas of concerns that could pose significant hazards during a storm-related event, things like dams, culverts, you know, problems with our facilities, et cetera. They're all reviewed for potential issues, and then, you know, we put together corrective action plans. We, and actually, I think we're meeting tomorrow to interview the two people who respond, two out of the three people that responded to the RFP for that. We've received several complaints regarding the practice of panhandling at the intersection of 18 and 123. I've been advised by KP Law that most courts that have looked at this issue have held that panhandling is protected by the First Amendment. If an individual is interfering with the flow of traffic or causing a threat to the safety of himself or others, this activity may be considered disorderly conduct. However, even in such a case, the recommendation is that the person be encouraged to move to a safer location, rather than requiring them to stop what they're doing or subjecting them to any sort of detainment. Town Clerk Leanne Adams has advised me that a recent change to the election laws require that effective immediately, the law regarding the assignment of police officers at polling places is amended to require the Board of Selectmen, Town Council, or City Council to actually do the assigning of the police officers and/or constables to the polling places. Previously, this was the responsibility of the Chief of Police. Don't know why they made this change. I will work with Leanne, though, to establish some sort of a plan that will, you know, present to the Board prior to the, in the elections, and for your approval to assign officers as necessary. Back in May, we received notice that the Federal Emergency Management Agency issued a major disaster declaration for the severe winter storm that impacted Massachusetts on the 28th and 29th of January. This makes federal disaster assistance available to us. Finance Director Andrew Nokum has been working with the DPW Police and Fire to gather necessary documentation. At this point, it looks like we may be eligible for approximately $70,000 in reimbursement. On Tuesday, June 21st, representatives from Clifford and Kenny conducted a training at the Abington Senior Center. Topics covered included open meeting law review, review of expectations of volunteer committee board members, how to conduct a meeting with civility and respect, de-escalation techniques for dealing with contentious meetings. I'd like to thank all of the board members that did participate, committee members that did participate. They were, I think they probably found it to be an extremely helpful training, and we are going to do this training again in the fall, so hopefully, anybody who didn't make it at that one can make it to the fall one. We're working on year-end closeout, preparing for the new fiscal year projects. I'm gonna be meeting the Finance Committee for the Year-End Transfers the week of the 15th, so I would like to schedule this Board to meet on July 11th, so you can review and approve the transfers as well. And that's all I have.
All right, any questions to-
I actually do. I usually do. Regarding the, because I mentioned at the beginning the code red, I had a couple of residents reaching out to me, asking some questions about it. So, when we're, is what we're posting on our town Facebook page also being, is that part of the email blast that residents are getting?
So, yeah, if we put out an email blast, it will typically go, it is a bit quirky, and we're still getting used to the system, but it will also post on Facebook.
Okay, all right, and vice versa, or is it-
If we post something on Facebook, it won't necessarily, no, it's not gonna be a code red.
Okay.
I hope not.
All right.
Especially if you guys are posting something.
Oh, yeah.
TikToking your kids.
Yeah, but, so-
Well, no, the only things we really post on the town Facebook page is like, anything really-
It's usually something. Yeah, and we did get a little bit of feedback. Some people felt that maybe we overused it on that first weekend. And it's quite possible, because, you know, it's a new toy, and we wanted to make sure it worked.
Well, we had six phone calls come in that Friday, because we had like, three for the first one, and then Sundays came out, late on Friday, it was saying it was June 12th, and that-
So, we'll get some bugs to work out.
Yeah.
There's no doubt.
I think a lot of people, we gotta let people know that we are working them out in that.
Yeah.
So, I'm gonna send out a code red, actually, right after this meeting, to say that we're still working out.
We'll wake them up at 10 o'clock, just so you know.
Does it, so like, if something's going on in a specific, in a specific part of town, like, say, like, off of Dorsey or off of Hancock, Hancock Street, would, does the system target specific areas, or is it just general to the general public?
So-
People who subscribe, I should say.
Well, you have to be a subscriber. However, there are people that were already subscribed from different, I think, through code red in other areas. And once you're in, you're in. Now, sometimes, we may target a certain geographic area. There's several ways of doing that. We could, you know, pick out several streets, we could just do a radius, we can set it up for different groups, or we can just send it to everybody in town. But, does that answer?
Yeah, no, that does, yeah, that answers.
So, like, I don't know that, I don't know that it'll go out because of some of the bugs with the system, but, for instance, tomorrow, they will be paving, like, throughout the week, but I think tomorrow, they're gonna be doing paving on Summer Street. That would probably go out to everybody if we wanted to put it out, just to say, "Hey, be aware that there's gonna be some traffic delays, and Summer Street will be closed."
Yeah, no, because that was one of the things that I've heard from a couple of residents, that they, even if it might not be in their neighborhood, they were like, "Oh, I wanna know what's going on in town." Just, well, especially like, on Summer Street, it's like, "Okay, now I know to avoid going by Summer Street tomorrow."
And, you know, in the future, and we just haven't sort of rolled it out with the Water Department yet, but- Department yet, but in the future, if they're going to be doing hydrant flushing on, say, Dorsey, then we may send something out just to that general area to say, hey, look, we're gonna be in the area doing hydrant flushing, you know, when you get home, run the water for a few minutes or something.
Oh, okay.
So, again, you know, it, it's, it's a new tool.
Yeah.
We're trying to figure out, we don't wanna overuse it, but certainly, this is probably, like we said, this will be our primary way, because it, it reaches to everybody. If you just have a landline, you'll get a message. If you only prefer email, you'll get a message. If you wanna text, email, phone call, you can get them all, and then it'll also show up on Facebook, so.
Awesome.
There'll also eventually be a banner on, if it's not already on our front page, there'll be a banner that will have the last several messages on there, so if somebody just said, was there a message, did I miss something? They can go on there, and they can see, yeah, there was one earlier today or yesterday.
I was looking, I was looking at the town website this afternoon. Is, is there a link on the town website to go sign up to, for Code Red?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
There's a button right down on the front page on the bottom, I thought.
Yep.
It's.
Not allowed in.
Oh, we didn't tell you. Oh, wow.
Oh, we didn't tell you?
Thank you.
Good night.
Thanks, Chief.
Why am I not surprised? I think you're not surprised. Sure. There it is.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Click right on that, and there you go. And as, as you did point out, please do not use these buttons yet. They're not working properly. We've had nothing but trouble, so. There you go.
Okay, thank you.
So, the issue that has been coming up, I've seen at the front of stores in Abington, there is, looks like there's homeless people out there camping out, and to me, that is a huge health issue. So I don't know if the Health Agent or the Board of Health has gotten involved yet, but I would like them to get involved tomorrow. It's starting, I mean, this is a, not only is it a health issue, I mean, these people need help, so get them some help, but it's a health issue, it's sanitary. This is impacting residents, impacting businesses, anything. I mean, is this, is it trespassing? Do they need to be moved on? There's a lot of issues here.
That would be up to the property owner, or we would definitely look into it.
But that's what I'm saying, is, you know, we need to do something about it, because, I mean, I drove past it tonight, and there's, there's bags of trash out there, there's bottles, there's coolers, I mean, is, they're just everywhere. I mean, we, we need to work on this. So, I mean, what is the Health Agent or the Board of Health, have they done anything yet?
I don't know. I'll check with them.
Could you direct them to?
Sure.
Look into this tomorrow?
And something else, Scott, that's come up. Townwide business hours, is that a selectman thing? Is that a town charter bylaw thing?
Townwide business hours? I would have to say, I'll, I'll have to look, but my guess is it's in the bylaw in general, however, it's probably, depending on what kind of license they have, you have the ability to regulate it.
Right.
When they come in for that, this specific license, like a common BIC license, or, and it may be a Board of Health thing, if it's a food lic.
Right.
But I know, like, through, if they have a special permit, the zoning board may be able to set an hour, but if it's, you know, something more specific, I think you could certainly make recommendations.
Okay. You could just find out the definition.
On all businesses in general, or?
More so the 24-hour ones. The, the interest is to, basically, some people are interested in having the stores closed at 11, you know, whatever, like.
So all stores, yeah.
Everything, just gasp, doesn't matter. You know, whatever. We could definitely look at the hours down the road, but not having 24-hour.
Might as well. The parks are closed, whatever.
Yeah, what else are they gonna do? Go to the bridge, I guess, we didn't close the.
No, we did, it's part of the park.
Yeah.
We'll put a gate there.
Listen, I, I can't wait till the gate go up.
Oh, look, we have executive session on the list.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Is there anything else? Could I have a motion to enter into executive session and not to reconvene?
I'll make a motion that we enter into executive session and reconvene.
Second?
Second.
Alex?
Aye.
Aye.
Tim?
Yep.
Aye.
Aye. All right, Paul, that's it. Good night, folks.